Order, real call please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Recording stopped.
Councilmember Wong is absent. Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mongi?
Here. Thank you. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move your iron?
So move it, Councilmember Schwer?
Second. You pick.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we got our top.
Recording in prog- recording, recording in progress.
Thank you, Mayor. We got three topics tonight. First one up is our canine presentation. We have Ramsey County here and I think we'll have Chief Babenroth to start us off. Thank you, Chief.
Good, hi, everyone. Mr. Mayor, City Council, happy to be here today. This presentation is kind of the culmination of two years of research and conversations and training. A lot of it credit is due to Sergeant Ben Badowich. He kind of spearheaded our venture into exploring everything canine program related. So happy to finally deliver some information on the, on the topic. And, and very honored to have our, some good, good folks here with us. Ramsey County Sheriff's Deputy Tony Body, Rick Rodean, and Steve Pearson from Performance Kennels. And then Canine Zeus in the background, you might hear occasionally. So it started off just a little about canines in Ramsey County. There's a total of five agencies currently that have police canines. So Roseville, Moundsview, Ramsey County, Maplewood, and St. Paul. We're currently dependent on one of these agencies having a canine on shift when the situation ever arises where we would need them to help us out on an incident. Some of those recent incidents have been searching for homicide suspects, firearms, shooting suspects, missing kids, vulnerable adults, building searches, drugs, and search warrant executions. So what does a canine program bring to an agency? Definite enhancement of, of the delivery of public safety. Starting off with the bread and butter, just search and rescue operations. Also searching for evidence, firearms, weapons. Dogs can get into places that people physically cannot get into, including spaces or places where it would be more dangerous to send a police officer. They can search and locate missing children, vulnerable and high-risk people. They can smell narcotics. They enhance officer safety. They're great for community engagement. And then de-escalating and diffusing countless situations. A couple recent incidents, September 19th, 2021. North St. Paul, police officers responded to Housie Park for a shooting. Suspect was identified by the resident attempting to steal items from their vehicle. The resident then confronted the suspect. Suspect runs away. As they're running, they fired 19 shots at the suspect, hitting their resident, hitting their house and their vehicle. Thankfully not the person. Because we didn't have a canine of our own, we put in the request. And, you know, as, when, when you put in a request for another agency to come help you out, you're dependent on, one, that agency having a canine on, and then that agency not already being tied up on their own incident in their city. So in this particular case, it was 26 minutes later, we were able, able to get some assistance. And at that time, the, the suspect was gone. We are very thankful, this isn't a slam on our, our assisting agencies. We're, we're very thankful anytime we're getting assistance. But just that's the reality of police work. There's things going on in, in every single city at the same time. So we can put out the ask, but if they're doing their own thing, trying to keep their own city safe, it might be a little bit before we can get that assistance. Couple other requests. We had two recent searches of North High School for firearms in this most recent school year. In those cases, the canine from the ATF helped us out. Burglaries at our own VFW in Legion. Couple other residential and, and business burglaries. Then our homicide on McKnight on June 19th, where we're looking for multiple suspects. We had canines from multiple agencies. And in that case, the Moundsview Canine Team actually located a set of keys that one of the suspects was carrying on them as they were fleeing the scene. And then there's countless just various incidents where if we would have had a canine, that would have been able to help us out in the immediate. So just last year alone, looking at these totals, it's 27 burglaries, 461 suspicious activities, community events. We had 34 weapons calls, 10, two homicides, 19 missing persons, domestic assaults, 143. So really the amount of incidents where we, if we would have had a canine, they would have benefited the incident. Their, the number's pretty high. It also enhances our department, just operationally helps with retention, recruitment. Police officers like having opportunities. And when there's more opportunities, that absolutely increases morale. So having a canine program on, on our agency would be a huge benefit. Then on the officer development and growth, there's a, the minimum for canine handler training is 16 hours a month. So every, every month, officers that are canine handlers, they're getting 16 hours of, of training. It also allows us to be a resource for other agencies. So if, you know, our partners in, in Maplewood or Ramsey County happen to be on shift with, without a canine, their canine officers off, you know, we would then be able to help them and return the favors that they often give us with canine assistance. And then our, you know, ultimate goal is strengthening trust within our communities. So doing all the community engagement events that we can. When we get requests from schools to come do a demo at various schools or community events, we're able to deliver on that and make connections and strengthen trust with our community. So operationally, the goal would be to have one canine on the day shift and one on the night shift. This would allow public safety to be enhanced for residents and, and safety of our officers by having police canines at all hours of the day. This also, if you have two, it allows handlers to train together, which would then reduce overtime costs because it wouldn't be dependent on training with another agency on their training schedule. So when they can train on shift, then that cuts on, on the overtime costs. And it also just increases our availability that a dog's going to be on our, our scheduled shift. So funding, the 2023 Public Safety Aid Bill. This was one-time public safety funds for local, county, and tribal governments. North St. Paul is expected to receive about $542,000 in this bill. Other cities are spending on their public safety areas. Some of the funds on hiring or retention bonuses, body worn cameras, recruiting, and vehicles and equipment. My intention would be to spend some of this, these funds on our canine program for us. So what do these costs actually look like? The police dog itself is $12,000. Vet care, $1,500. Food, $1,300. The basic canine equipment package, $1,400. Handler school, $6,500. The squad car is, is obviously the big ticket item. And $90,000 for the fully suited squad car. A kennel at a, the handler's residence, $2,000. And then annual association fees, $500. So for a two canine program, the initial cost is, is the big price tag. But using those state public safety aid grant funds, the total would be $230,400 just for the initial. And recently, which you'll hear about more when we start talking CIP stuff, but push some squad cars to further retention replacement cycles. So that made some room for the incoming, what would be incoming to new canine squad cars. So on annual basis for a two canine program, vet care, $3,000. Food, $2,600. Association fees, $1,000. Boarding costs, $2,000. The Fair Labor Standards Act mandates that police canine teams, police canines belong to the department and then we must compensate the canine handler for at-home care, grooming, and training of the dog. That's really the, the biggest cost associated with the canine program. If you don't pay them, there's been lawsuits that, then you end up backpaying them. So it's better too, when you're starting a program, you just get it all set. You get it in, in union contracts. That ends up being for, for two handlers, $25,000 a year. So the total, $33,600 for a two canine program. With the upcoming addition for a contract, you're, you're soon to see, has an additional $32,168 in the SRO contract with 622. Pretty much wipes out what would be the new annual cost of a canine program. So here to talk more about actual training and experiences. Starting off, Deputy Tony Body, who's a canine handler. I've known Tony a long time. Great person, great, great police officer. Very happy that he's here. Tony, I can roll right into your slides here.
Okay, so this is just a little bit of my background. I'm assigned to carjacking and auto theft and our apprehension unit, which is Regional Services. Been with the county for eight years. My first four was a school resource officer and patrol. Been canine the last three years. Five and a half of that has been SWAT as an operator and now as a SWAT canine handler. Medal of Valor in 2021 and unit citations for SWAT and patrol in '21 and '22. Next slide. There's my buddy. That is Canine Cross. He's a German Shepherd and Malinoise mix. Four years old, service time of three years. We have been involved in a lot of canine work. So a lot of those cities, all of those cities and those agencies are places that we've gone for canine tracks, article searches, missing persons, any kind of canine services. That's about 80% of the agencies in the metro area that I've gone to help with Cross. Next slide. So life at home, because I was a super squared away, excited handler. Before I met Steve, I went home and when I found out I was getting my dog and I had a lot of free time, because I had a kid, that's what I built. Probably overkill, but my dog is very cushioned and bougie and comfortable when he's at home. I think when he's comfortable, he's more likely to work when he's happy. He likes his kennel. I like his kennel. Very sociable to family and friends. I had two other lap dogs at the time. He wanted to be friends with the 15-year-old lap dogs. They did not want to be friends with him. He is very stable around my kids. I have two boys at home, three years old and eight months old. No aggression with them whatsoever. I have not had any issues at all. He takes better direction from my wife at home than he does me and realizes what his role is in the pack. He is very good at being able to tell the difference between when we're off and when we're on duty. Right? He sees a uniform, squad car starts up in the garage, he starts barking and, and losing it. At that point, I do keep kids and wife away from him because I don't do anything to confuse him. He thinks that we're going to work and we are. So I keep that very separate. When we come back home, we pull in garage, he knows that we're home, we're done. Uniform comes off, kennel door opens, it's time for him to play and be a pet dog. All right? Next slide. So before I got my dog, this is what my garage looked like. I added on another 500 square feet. You don't need to do that. I have a very loving wife that believed in what my dreams were and what my career aspirations were. So I used that extra 500 square feet to train when I was on paternity leave. I was off for 12 weeks. Dog can't sit for 12 weeks. He has to do something. So I use that space in my garage to train. Winter months, you know, training, we do training bi-weekly. Training does not happen only bi-weekly. There is training every single day with this dog, between dog and handler. I just train with my entire unit bi-weekly. But every day, we're doing something with this dog. All right? Next slide. So these dogs are not savage, wild animals that go out and bite people just for no reason. All right? My dog will apprehend people when I tell him to. All right? When he's at home, these people don't look afraid of him. All right? He's a pet at home. He's part of our family when he's at home. Next slide. This is what our training looks like. And Steve will go a little bit more into training when, when we get to him. A lot of these concepts I learned from Steve. Compulsion, we're not hitting the dogs, we're not beating up the dogs, we're not doing any of that stuff. If you're in the psychology, a lot of it is Pavlovian. It's a reward system, it's conditioning, operant. It's a lot of the psych, the psychological stuff that goes along with this canine training to get the dog to do what you want him to do. If he feels like he would be rewarded for what he's doing, he's more likely to do it without conflict. All right? We train with other handlers and other units. Send handlers to vendor training and/or conferences is really important. I typically try to go to a training at least once a year involving other handlers. What have you seen? What's trending in your part of the country? Florida, Arizona, what do you guys allowed to do? What do your policies look like? What does your county attorney think of your canine program? How do you guys document your training? How do you guys document your apprehensions? I could go on and on for days. Those are things that you want to send your handler to, to have that knowledge because it's going to be important when he's faced with a decision on, should he send this dog? Should he not send this dog? And then later on, on Monday morning, when you guys come back, now you got a lawsuit for something that your handler did. All right? Certification is, for the county is NPCA. Steve will likely talk more about that. Demos helps your transparency with your agency. People love dogs. If I crash my car into a wall, there would be more Facebook notes to the sheriff about how the dog is doing and no one will care about how I'm doing. All right? People love dogs. It's a great opportunity to reconnect with the community. I love catching bad guys with my dogs, but I love demos. It's a great opportunity for kids to come out, for people to look at the cars. People want to know what the dog eats. Does he live with you? I love answering those questions and they never get old to me. All right? And lastly, the vet. You want to choose a vet that's going to be available for you 24 hours a day. That dog is going to get hurt. That dog is going to eat something. My dog is eating my lunchbox on a Sunday. He needs to go to the vet right now because it can turn into something really catastrophic. And as a city, you've made an investment into this dog. You do not want to lose that investment to a lunchbox. All right? Next slide. Deployments, so for the county, we deploy for narcotics, whisper and wall stops, which is basically when DEA calls and says, hey, this guy's got 30 pounds of dope in his car. Alls we want you to do is stop it and figure out a way to get into it and run your dog around it. Awesome. That's easy because in the paper, it's going to say Tony Body and Cross stopped the car with 30 pounds of dope in it, when really I knew that there was dope in it already. I just have to create a traffic stop for the DEA to get into that car. Assisting other agency is what AOA stands for. SWAT, specialty units, and feds. So typically, your day shift dog is probably going to be helping a lot of your alphabet agencies. Not a ton of burglaries during the day, whereas your night shift dog is going to be dealing with a lot of the burglaries. All the alphabet guys are gone home, they're sleeping in bed. So you're not going to be helping them much during the night. Search and rescue, missing kids. Great grandma's left the recovery unit or the memory unit at 90 years old and it's five below. We need to find her right now. We need to locate her. The dog can smell her. We got a better opportunity to find her faster with the dog than without the dog. Obviously criminal tracking and trailing, what, what, what Chief Babenroth spoke about. 26 minutes, you want to get a dog out there as soon as you can. More importantly, you want to get perimeter set up. Criminal apprehension is, is what most people would call a bite. I don't like the word bite because it just sounds like a lot, a lot of liability. The correct term is apprehension. We're sending the dog to apprehend someone. All right? And lastly, article search, weapons, keys, clothing, evidence. After the fact, we'll deploy the dog for, to locate. Something that's in tall grass, we wouldn't be able to see without the dog. Next slide. All right? So I'll actually add another caveat onto this in terms of notable deployments. Your last homicide in your city, my dog was involved in two of those arrests. And it's just as simple as telling the guy, stop running, or I'm going to deploy the canine. Guy decides he doesn't want to be bit and he decides to give up. All right? Most notable, Maplewood had a suicide last summer. His wife then took their children later in the day and she drowned her, she drowned and she also drowned her three kids. and she also drowned her three kids. Uh, Cross found Phoenix in Lake Vadness. He found shoes, he found a lot of different articles and put us in about twenty-five yards of finding the first body. Um, Steve will tell you that when I went through his school, I had a lot of difficulty getting my dog to get in the water. That was the first time he got in water, which sadly I knew that there's bodies here. He is not a cadaver dog, but their body odor was still so fresh, um, that he was able to track to them, right? Next slide. I think that's the final one for me. Right?
Yeah, I think that's it. Want to introduce again Steve Pearson from Performance Kennels. Uh, meeting Steve for an hour prior to, uh, this, this meeting. He is absolutely an expert in the, uh, area of K nines and Steve was in law enforcement for over thirty years and I think he's been training K nines for almost just as long, if not longer. So very happy to have him here to speak on just the selection process and training for K nines. Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to go over real briefly, I know you guys are short on time, of, of what the basic training package looks like. It's a twelve week program. It is post-approved for the entire twelve weeks and we cover narcotics detection or explosives, if we went that way, and the patrol works. What, what is patrol work? Patrol work is you're tracking, your evidence search would include guns, shell casings, anything that's a suspect may drop or throw or toss that would connect him to a crime that may have occurred. Um, evidence search is, is not a sexy thing, but it is done a lot and it is a super valuable uh, asset that these dogs have. A lot of people think about patrol dogs as just bite, bite, bite. That is just not the case. Uh, I retired from Brooklyn Park P D. We, we ran three dogs up there and we used our dogs a lot and we had very, very few bites. So you don't want to go down that road and, and, and think that that's what this is about. It's not. The, the biting part is, is a deterrent. Many, many people who, who decide to commit crimes, they don't mind fighting your officers. They, some of them enjoy it. They don't want to deal with a dog. And so just the mere threat of the, of the apprehension actually deters use of force because it deters the suspect from fleeing and they give up. Every time? No. Okay. So tracking, evidence search, criminal apprehension, building search, um, and narcotics detection, that's your basic package that you get done in twelve weeks. We get them out of that twelve weeks, get a basic certification in them and then they're ready to work on the, on the road. That certification protects them in a sense. There is no state or federal law on, on certification of police dogs. Some states have rules and laws, Minnesota does not. So we self-police ourselves because if we don't, somebody's going to police us. And so we constantly strive for that certification. Once they're done with the twelve weeks, they're able to work the street and the, and then the, the training just begins. The training is ongoing, like Tony said, it's, it's just constant. Um, but finally, where do the dogs come from? They come from Eastern Europe. I get my dogs out of Slovakia. Uh, I could talk for hours about why, but here's the reason why. That's where the Eastern, the Eastern European area is where the working lines of the German Shepherd ended up. When the Soviet Union collapsed, the working dogs were still there. The West had the show dogs, the East had the working lines and that's still true today. So you go to the factory, that's where they started and, and that's why we go there. Um, I can, like I say, talk about that for hours, but what I'd really like to do is answer questions rather than waste time having me talk about what I think you want to hear.
I just got to ask quick, what is the service life of a dog?
The patrol dog will work until roughly the, between the ages of seven and ten. A single purpose dog that's, for example, that only does narcotics or explosives, they tend to work a little bit longer because they have less stress, less stress in their life. Um, but between seven and ten. How old are they when we get them? Eleven to fourteen months. So they're young when we get them, they're, they're just kids. This dog behind Rick's dog, I think he was about twelve months when, when Rick got him this past spring and he just finished his basic training this spring. So they're young. You get a lot more bang for the buck now, um, but the training had to change because of the youth of the dog. They're still growing.
Any more questions?
It, my, and I could be completely wrong here. My understanding is, um, the dogs that are deployed right now that have been trained on to do marijuana need to be cycled out? Is that creating a backlog?
No, it's really not because we stopped for, for the most part, we stopped training marijuana dogs three to four years ago. And so they're starting to fall off. The marijuana dogs that we have today and still do train are in the prisons, in the jails and at the airport. Uh, they're the only current, up-to-date marijuana dogs. We call them weed dogs. Um, so it's really not a problem. There's only a handful of marijuana dogs left that are working in patrol and, uh, all of the dogs that I've been doing the last three and a half, four years have not been on marijuana. They are on fentanyl, however. Fentanyl, fentanyl is everywhere. It's, it's, it's unbelievable. And so they do detect fentanyl pills.
Talk to me a little bit about two dogs versus one. Just, this is new to me, so completely curious. I mean, go ahead.
Well, specifically, um, is this for me or the chief?
Whoever, which, whichever wants to handle it.
Go ahead and then I'll, I'll chime in.
So, kind of like I hinted on, if you have, kind of like we have two drones, just to start it off, we have two drones in case one goes down. So if you have one K nine, the K nine gets injured, um, then you're out of K nine for as long as that injury. And if you have two, you can keep your K nine program rolling and keep delivering, uh, the services that a K nine brings to your community while the one is down. Um, the other element is, is the training factor. As it's been mentioned, you know, the minimum training every single month is sixteen hours. If you have two, they could train together versus if you have one, then they have to hit up, uh, Tony or someone, a K nine handler with Maplewood or another agency, uh, say, hey, when, when are you training? Uh, I need to, I need your help to train my dog. Probably is going to be on a day that you're not working here, which would mean it's an overtime day on our overtime salary. So the influx of, all right, well, now I got sixteen hours of overtime, uh, just so they can get their monthly training, um, does that rise to the level of, well, if we would have just had two, then, uh, it would have reduced overtime and, or, or cost just the same for having one, because now we're paying for it in overtime by, by having one. So, um, yeah, mostly just the, the training and then the ability in, in case there is a, an injury or, uh, to the handler or, or the K nine, um, you can keep the service alive and well in your community. I don't know if you guys have anything else to add?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I also think, uh, so one, I'll talk about retention. Um, I think when you got two dogs or two available vacant K nine handler positions, it increases interest and retention. Um, you got more competition, officers want to stay here, they feel like they have a chance to, um, evolve their career, um, in North St. Paul. Secondly, from an operations standpoint, um, having a daytime K nine and having a nighttime K nine, again, as I talked about, is two different kinds of businesses, uh, business. North St. Paul by population is a smaller city, but you guys got a lot of business here. You got busy highways, thirty-six, six ninety-four. There's a lot of people passing in and out of your city. Um, so while the problem people may not be your residents or might be a smaller population of your residents, it's more likely the people that work here or are passing through here that you want to use the K nine for. At night, there's a lot of things that happen that probably just aren't important enough to cross your desk because they ended well, meaning, um, I think Steve spoke earlier where you have a bad guy that wants to fight with officers. If you don't have a K nine there and officers have to go hands-on with this guy, um, I can tell you, I'm a big dude, if I was a criminal, probably take me into custody, but I'm going to hurt a couple of your officers. I'm going to break a finger, I'm going to bust a lip, I'm going to do something. Versus if you got that K nine and that K nine barks, there's been times where I haven't even gotten out of my car and bad guy says, okay, I'm done. He gets out of the car and where he's taken into custody and you never see that across your desk because it ended well. You would never know that, that, that's a, what I would call a hidden statistic. You wouldn't otherwise see that because it ended well. But in that moment, you defeated injuries to officers, you defeated a use of force issue by simply having a K nine there.
I can just add to that quickly. I'm glad you brought that up, um, just to kind of dial in the, the retention and, and morale boosting, uh, element for, for having two, uh, just in casual conversations, uh, within the department over the past two years of talking, I was talking about getting a K nine program. We have a lot of young, great officers and I, I think there's at least six that would be absolutely interested in putting in to be K nine handlers. So having two, um, to get two in, into being K nine handlers out of six is a lot better than just having one. So to provide that opportunity, the additional opportunity of having two become handlers would be huge.
And to kind of build on the question of the two dogs, um, and Tony, this can either fall to you or Steve, are you the only handler? I mean, you'd mentioned when you're on paternity leave that, that your dog was home with you for the, for the twelve weeks. So the dog works your shifts or when you're off, is it on duty with another handler?
One dog, one handler.
One dog, one handler. Okay.
Yes. Some departments have tried that multiple handler idea because it sounds economical.
That's why I asked.
It doesn't work. That, that dog has to bond to the handler.
Okay.
I mean, when we start these dogs, um, day one, the handlers hand-feed the dogs for months. You get that bond going and food's a powerful motivator. It's the primary reward. That's how they get dolphins to jump through the hoop, right? Food. And you establish that bond by hand-feeding these rough, tough police dogs and you get that bond going and everything else starts to fall in place.
Thank you. What happens if an officer leaves and that dog, so the dog is the city dog, if that officer moves on to some other department, how do we handle that?
That, that can happen. Uh, pretty rare, but it can happen. Um, the dog is retrainable depending on his age. If the dog is young enough, you simply train the dog to a new handler and it's very, very doable. Dogs don't only have one bond in them. They, they can bond to a new person and, and I've, I've done it. If the dog is eight years old and the handler moves on, it's not economically worthwhile to retrain that dog to a new handler unless that handler has experience and doesn't have to go to a twelve week program.
How many, um, K nine does, mounds you, how many do they have?
Two. Two.
Steve, how many dogs have you received that are untrainable?
Oh, most of them, but in the world, but the dogs that I get, I wouldn't bring them back here if they weren't trainable. Uh, if I get a, here's, here's the only problem that happens with these dogs. You got to look at the stress that they go through. So they drive from Slovakia to Amsterdam and they fly from Amsterdam to Chicago or Atlanta, wherever I bring them in. Then they drive to my place, then I get them out of the crate and we, we spend the next several days recovering the dog. It's super, super stressful. Every once in a while, luckily not very often, they break. Psychologically, they break. You'll never see that dog. A department will never see that dog. I have to, I have to eat that, um, I have to either send them back, but that's super expensive. I worked that out with my guy in Slovakia, but I will never give a department a dog that's broken or untrainable. Um, I don't like to fail and if the new handler fails, I failed and that's just not going to happen. It's not, that's not optional.
Can, my understanding from your statements is you are only German Shepherds? Um, as, as this is a new program to North St. Paul, none of us, i-if we go with it, are going to be sure what the right fit is. Um, can, can you just describe the benefits of German Shepherds versus some of the other types?
Sure. The, the primary dogs that I use for dual-purpose patrol dogs, so a dual-purpose patrol dog is a patrol dog who does the tracking and the apprehension and the building searches, evidence searches, and he has a detection specialty, either narcotics or explosives. Most are narcotics, there aren't that many explosive dogs in the state, there just aren't. Uh, and your department would not need an explosive dog. Um, so for those dogs, we get German Shepherd and German Shepherd Malinois Cross, which is what Tony's dog is. Uh, the only other dog that, that you see are your single-purpose dogs, which are your sporting breeds. So your Labs, your German Short Air Pointers, that type of thing. Um, the downside to a single-purpose dog is that you lose the ability to use that dog as a deterrent to flee, as a, as a, um, uh, as a tool to do building searches, area searches, and, you know, like Tony gave the example, stop or I'll send the dog and the guy gave up as soon as he heard the dog bark. You do that with a Lab, they're, they're going to laugh. Uh, so a Lab doesn't offer you that opportunity. Um, I never bring back a dog that is not as social as Rick's dog. Never. I don't want that. I don't need the chief calling me saying, your dog bit my handler again, or he bit somebody he shouldn't have. That shouldn't be the dog's fault, that should be because the handler did something he shouldn't have done. People make mistakes, but my dogs are, are social and they have to be. I don't want my name on, you know, just bite, bite, bite. That's just not what it's about. We spend a lot of time training, just because you can doesn't mean you should. Um, de-escalation techniques. Why didn't you use a different level of force rather than the dog? We train that constantly. We do scenario-based training towards the end of the class where we put the handlers into situations where they have the decision to make. You got two seconds, what are you going to do? Well, the answer isn't, I don't know, because the police have to make split-second decisions when rapidly evolving situations. So we put them through those scenarios and, and make sure that they're making the correct decisions and that the handlers aren't getting hurt or killed. You get hurt and killed in training. We don't want you getting hurt and killed in the real world and that's why we have training. So social is, uh, social dogs are super, super important, not only for you, but for me. And the chief.
It's not adding another officer at night, one officer. If you have three now, one would be K nine and the other two would just be regular street patrol, correct?
Yeah, it's not adding, uh, a person. It's just assigning, uh, officers to become K nine handlers, not an additional staffing increase.
If this works out, um, could you describe to us, um, because we don't have a K nine program, what the process is? I'm assuming we have to develop a, um, uh, rules when you can use him, public, um, input to, to a K nine program? Can you tell us that process?
Sure. So we've been, that's kind of been a, a part of our, uh, past two years of researching K nine programs and, uh, we have all the, the surrounding agencies who have K nine programs, all of their policies, we've, we've looked at all of them. Uh, we, we are near completion of our own policy, uh, which is, is in alignment with every other K nine program within Ramsey County. We're not doing, you know, policies that allow us to do things that other agencies say that you can't do. So feel pretty good about our progress in our own policy right now as far as the selection process, which, uh, I'm sure Steve and Tony and Rick and everybody that has a K nine program would, would say that it's one of the most important parts of, uh, having a K nine program is selecting the right handler. Uh, I would absolutely lean on, um, the current programs and, and Steve and Tony and, and any other handlers to be a part of the selection process, to let them weigh in on, um, our officers that are interested in becoming K nine handlers and helping us make sure we're identifying the right ones, um, who have the, the energy and the drive and the motivation and the, um, determination to be a, a great K nine handler for our community.
Another question with, um, training, they, you train, you, if you have two of them, then they would train together. Wouldn't there still be overtime because you guys are twelve-hour shifts?
Yeah, we could get a little, uh, creative on their training schedule to make the overlap occur with their schedule on their set training days. So, you know, if you, if you have our six to six normally, uh, for our day shift starting on their, on their day fours, we, we would, uh, you know, have them in, if it's, if it's an eight-hour portion of that shift where they're working. in, if it's an eight-hour portion of that shift where they're working the same eight hours. So they'd both be scheduled. That's their training day. So then it would just be training at regular time instead of overtime wages.
When they're doing the training, is that going to leave you down, people out in the street during that time then?
Not any different than it would be just for, you know, somebody on vacation days. We'd actually have more staffing on because then we'd have two K-9 handlers on when they're normally not scheduled over the same overlap. So we'd actually have more cops in the city on their training days where if there was a big incident, then they could put the pause on training and go help handling calls, so.
All right. Well, I think we're, appreciate the information, and thank you so much for, I'd like to whip by with the dog up front if you could on the way out because I do want to see the dog. I've been hearing him chew, but I haven't seen the dog yet.
Thank you all for listening. Thank you guys for coming here.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you all for all the information.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Don't take the ball away.
Just what I was thinking. I want the ball. Does he want it more than I do?
We got a body cam?
It's a beautiful dog.
For the dog?
No body cams for this.
All right.
Well, the color of sunny.
Big dog. Oh, what a pretty dog.
And that's the same mix you were talking about?
He's a shepherd.
There's the shepherd?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Your cross, you know, sometimes they got more shepherd than Malinois, sometimes more Malinois shepherd, but they tend to have shorter hair.
Okay.
Like a Malinois, not a, under collection.
Is this one of the specialties, too?
Narcotics and patrol. He's certified in both. So think about it, it's a steep climb. A dog that knows nothing, and a handler knows less. And in 12 weeks, they come out and they're certified in patrol and narcotics. It's amazing. And then a year later, they click.
Are you enjoying your assignment? Officer, are you enjoying your assignment with the dog so far? Is it at home? Is it doing well?
I have three kids. He gets along with all my kids.
That's awesome.
A little skittish to my wife, but.
Well. Aren't all men a little skittish?
Excuse me.
This isn't recorded.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right. I didn't turn my microphone on. My wife's going to listen to that.
I've got an extra room for you.
Yeah, there's plenty of garage.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hello there. Oh, yeah.
In a heartbeat.
Well, thank you. We're ready to go on.
Peter Hall.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity. We've got two presentations that are going to follow, the police presentation. There is a piece of city-owned property at 17th Avenue and Delaware Street that we've owned for over a decade, I believe, and we've had some interest in it, unasked, over the past few months. And so we issued an RFP to evaluate each of those, and we received three responses, two of which will be presentations tonight. So the first will be Tracy Luther and Doug Andrus. Looks like it's just Tracy tonight.
He's not here yet.
Oh.
Oh, well, the other people are here. If you want to do them first.
See, we're early.
You're early. Just a moment.
Good. Good.
Yeah. Bring the dog back in.
Yeah. Everybody's leaving. Workshop done?
She's going. Where's the pizza? The other one is, and everybody ran out the door. I think they're afraid of him.
Grace is pretty intimidating.
Well, if the rest of the staff comes back, we'll do something. We lost everybody. We should have commercial breaks, I think.
Yeah, we're going to switch the order. So High Point will be our first presentation.
Perfect.
I think your partner's behind you, maybe. Tracy, is that him? Yeah.
They're going to let High Point go first.
How are you? Good. Good to see you.
Hi. Do you want a dog? They're giving away dogs. I hate 394.
If I was mayor, I would say.
I'm not comfortable.
Oh, my gosh. You're welcome. They need to be re.
So you're reimbursed for your snacks?
Uh-uh. No. I do it for the love of my family.
Hello there.
Hi, how are you?
Good, you?
We're doing fine, thank you.
Good. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Jimbo with High Point Land.
You're a little taller than the last one. There you go. Now we got you.
Might need a little IT support. Well, that's better.
All right.
We were going to just start our little video. Do you know how to do that? I think, I think we should just be able to.
It's plugged in, I think, already.
You drop the four-letter acronyms.
And then do we have some sound here?
Oh, I like the golf. Where are you, Bodie?
Bodied you off.
If you can fit a golf course on that parcel, I'd be pretty impressed.
Well, I'm not quite sure what I was pointing at, but that was just basically to show you that we have done some developing, excuse me. And so that was 3M Starton Park, which we turned into the Royal Club. We were the real estate component for that. So in, do you have more that you want to show here? There's a kind of a slide. It just, it keeps us on track as well. You know, who is High Point Group? So we're the High Point Real Estate Land Group, and that, we did the Royal Club development. We, if you go to our website, and I won't spend a lot of time on that. The purpose of it was just to demonstrate that we have been in the land development business for probably north of 30 years. I actually teach the land development class for Kaplan. This particular site and project is important to us because I'm from Montomedi, and I happened to marry a Shifsky, which are right over there. That was a little work. I played some hockey. I don't know which was harder, getting, marrying the Shifsky or playing for Herbie Brooks, but anyway, we got through both of those. And so, but we're active in the land development business. And so in this, and I'll try to make it brief, I think it's going to, is a couple of just agenda points. One is we would enjoy doing the project in our backyard simply because we are from here. It's important for us. You know, grew up here. I actually owned a business here way back in the 80s, so Boo Boo's Bar, and you guys are probably all too young to remember that, but I was, you play hockey, you buy a bar, and then you run out of money, and then you go into real estate to try to make a living. That was what happened to me. Anyway. So we've been in the real estate business for about 30 years. And so in that, we're brokers and qualified, teach the land development class at Kaplan, and have probably done, I don't know how many thousands of units in five different states. It's not a big deal. It's just what we specialize in is community relationship, listening to what the community needs. We come out of the residential real estate sales world, so we understand product types. Like in the example you just saw, we changed the second and third phases based on what the market was showing us. So we understand that. And I think if we had to provide a couple of references, we were just awarded the Tanner's Lake project from Oakdale in a situation similar to this. It's been there for a long time, so we're going to be developing that. If you called the city of Centerville, we did Bayview Villas, which is on the water there. And I think if you called the city, you'd find, you'd find that we had a good working relationship, you know. So and then Lake Elmo, I'm not sure if any of the same people are there. That was, that was, that was a challenging project, but we were able to work with the city and the community and get through that. So as far as our team, it's Kim, myself, and then we have a builder that we like a lot and use. And then I think the other thing I would talk about is price. We originally were here following Paul Bergerman, who's a friend who drew a site plan that had 12 units. I think we submitted one with 20 units. I mean, that's a little bit, if we get by the initial kind of interview phase, then I think we take the time to draw something. I've had, we've had better results listening to the community rather than trying to force something in there. But as far as the price goes, it's going to really depend on the number of units. You know, both of our drawings were an attached product. I think you have to be price-sensitive in that neighborhood to have a product that one fits in. There we go with the Shifsky companies. So the fourth generation, my nephew does most of our utility work and road and sewer and infrastructure work, and they're obviously right here in town, too. Anything else? So we've got the experience which we just talked about. Not quite sure how we're doing on time. You know, I'd rather be a good listener. I mean, are there any questions that anybody might have that we could address or answer?
So the plans we received here that in our packet show four-unit clusters. Is that what you're looking at doing?
Correct.
Is that one story or two?
It would be a two. You know, I think the plan that we thought of, and here's the original plan that we had here. This is a project that we looked at in Centerville that we're doing. It's a three-story. It's a park, live, sleep. You know, you park, it's a slab on grade, you live on the second level, and then you sleep on the third level. You know, fairly common plan. This is a plan that was under contract with 12 units, which was twin homes. It was six twin homes, and I think that was three years ago. It was under contract with a friend of ours, Paul Bergerman. And so I think the price would be a conversation that's driven by density. You know, we really have no agenda that it has to be this or it has to be that. It's going to be more communication with the neighborhood because I think you're going to find that the neighborhood, you know, is going to have an opinion. So this was the 12-unit plan. We submitted a 20-unit plan, and I think that part of it's open. You know, if we get to the point through this where we're in communication, it's similar to what we just did in Oakdale. We had an interview process. We chose to work together, you know, as a group, and then we sat down with John Stark, who is their, because he is our city planner, and just kind of walked through what was important to them. So we had three different components in that particular one, and I think the formatting would be the same. We don't have a specific agenda that has to be this or it has to be that because we've had better success, kind of listening to the community, listening to the city, and then looking at the market to see really what the market is calling for here. So that's a little open-ended for discussion, you know, beyond this meeting. You know, that's how we'd approach it. This is the project in Centerville that we were looking at. This is a drawing that I think is in your package. Fairly straightforward, but if we needed to talk about the density or we had resistance from the neighborhood about the density, we just kind of audible and make a field adjustment to something that was a little more less dense.
Well, I've lived around, you know, for many years, and people all think it's, you know, been an empty lot forever, but it was a church, of course. There was something there, but everybody who's moved in has moved in next to a vacant lot. So they probably think it's, you know, just sitting there forever, the way it's going to be. So we're going to have some, I'm sure, some discussions, just trying to figure it out. We do have housing for both ends we need. Need more family, of course, than we have the older people in the areas that need one level. So both of those are very interesting to me because we have a need for both, I think, in our community.
And I would agree, and it's similar to what we did in Lake Elmo. You know, what we found is that about 70% wanted a one-level living, and then the others were more family-oriented. This might be a reverse of that where you have, you know, a family affordability with the interest rates, and we're kind of in a different market. You know, it has to be price-sensitive. It has to be, you know, competitive, three bedrooms, two baths. How do you get that to work? Well, these days, it's in an attached building. But there's enough room where you might do some detach. We have a plan where we have two units in the middle, and then there's one level on each side, and we're open to talking about that also.
And part of it, too, when I look at that area, there's really not tall. Like, you're talking like the MNI, probably the garage floor, floor. Everything over there is one-story ramblers.
Correct.
So I mean, that area is pretty much all that. So you have that high buildings in density right there. They have a little.
I think if we took this plan and we changed the two end units to one level, I think we'd be going in the right direction, you know, or in the direction where it didn't just stick out like, like it maybe didn't belong there. But that's open for discussion. I mean, our goal tonight was just to introduce ourselves, say hi. If we get to a meeting, be on the meeting, you know, that's, those are all things. If we get to a meeting, be on the meeting, you know, that's, those are all things that we talk about all the time.
Sounds good.
One feature on this, on this plan here is the fact that if, if the neighbors bought in there, uh, thinking that it's gonna be vacant, uh, you know, there is, there is a lot of vacant. We've got a filtration pond there on the one that, and then just an open spot. So, so there is, uh, there is open space for those folks, uh, on the, on the east end of the project, which is kinda nice. So the, the, the development is really on the west side of the project. So it does kinda keep it open for those, uh, neighbors there.
And is that going to be a, a, like a park or just a wetland? Or what is the, on that drawing?
We'd be wide open.
Wide open.
We're gonna need some ponding, and then you're gonna need some open space. And so once we get it engineered, you know, into what, what, what the consensus would be. In, in doing an awful lot of this, I mean, in neighborhood meeting and, you know, we, we just, you know, most neighborhoods, when we did Centerville, uh, Baby Villas in Centerville, no one even talked to the neighbors. So, you know, I think the communication with the neighbors is really important. Um, and so if we listen to the neighbors, we, we know where we're trying to go, and we provide some choices, and I, I think that communication on the front is important. But back to your question, it'd be ponding and, and some open space.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Well, thanks for, thank you very much for bringing, let us look at it.
Thank you.
Good meeting you folks.
Yeah, you too, and appreciate.
Thank you.
Feel the ability.
Uh, one last question. We, we brought, we brought a number of examples of things that we're currently doing. I don't know if they really have importance or not. You can go to our website and find them, but we, you know, our last four or five projects that are in this neighborhood or, or in this area, East Metro. So if you, anybody would like to see that, uh, maybe the best thing is just go to our website and, and find it.
Yeah, I did go to the website and look at some of your places. Very nice.
Well, we're lugging them around here. It's the biggest folder we got.
There you go.
And I have Kim carrying it.
I'm, I'm waiting to see how big Tracy's folder is when he brings it up. Thank you.
Table, are you want us up there?
Yeah.
Wherever you're most nervous. Oh, everywhere.
I'm Doug Andrus, and you probably all know Tracy.
Thank you.
He's got his name everywhere in town, so.
I, I, I'll start off by saying we will not be building a golf course.
Really? Things a little tight?
Mini golf.
Mini golf, there you go. That's where the money is.
Could you throw up another sketch here? Please first. Just do this one first, and I'll do this one. Oh, boy.
We're not that tech savvy.
So you'll just, uh, use the arrow down when you're ready to move.
All right. This plan here, we've been working with Brandy and Brian and try and figure this site out, you know, how we can do it. The problem with this site is that, well, you see where Outlet B is, that long narrow part? It's only a hundred and twenty-five feet. I mean, you know, the picture looked really nice, but it, it's not to scale. That's not gonna, you can't fit them buildings in here. Right here, you have your sewer and water going all the way through here that you have to be so many feet away from. You cannot build a road on it, you cannot put the buildings on it. It's kind of an acre and a half of worthless property is what it amounts to. We tried to put this road in and do these townhomes, standalone townhomes. Two units on the end. After a little more research, this unit won't even work because of the sewer and water. It's too close, so that would have to be taken out. So then you would end up with nine units. Well, they're talking about the Bergerman development. Bergerman came in here, and when he proposed that development, as he found out, is why he's probably backed out of the deal, I called my excavating company, hey, give me a price for this. He said, well, chance would have it, he bid it for Bergerman. He knew all about the property. They had soil tests done, and there's bad soil, four to eight feet along that whole property where the church was and where the parking lot was. So that all has to be exported out to put in the road and the houses. This plan alone here, plus the other plan, we tried another plan here. We tried to go this way, too, to try and lose one that way and try and do the road a little different. By putting in the road and the sewer and water, you got about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work, seven twenty to seven fifty, not counting engineering fees and drafting fees. So you divide that out by nine properties, and it's just not feasible to do. So now you're thinking, well, maybe we could put in more properties. But the dimensions just aren't there to do it. You know, to put a road in and to try and get four buildings here and four buildings here, even two stories, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't work out, you know, to make it feasible to do. So then we come along, and we just thought, well, this is about the best thing for this property is if we just divide it into six lots, standard city lots. You don't need a PUD, you don't need anything. These are all made to setbacks. These are exactly as the lots that are there. Along with this, which is not shown, is we'd have to have a pond right here, too, probably, you know, for drainage and whatnot. And the rest of it would just have to be left. It would either be an association with, for them lots, for just their own use, give it to the city, whatever. I mean, or divide it out and give it to the neighbors, you know? It's, it's not good for anything. That's the problem. It's just too narrow, you know? So, and we would just build regular single-family homes on them, custom-built. I don't know what else we can add.
Well, back to a little brief history. Doug and I did the project on Seventh and Sixth Street very recently, which is almost.
Yeah, the Seventh Street Townhomes are working on them, they're almost gone, you know?
We've got a history of working with the city very recently, and we both have strong ties to the city. We can get it done tonight. And this scenario with their city lots, I mean, as a, as a council and a planning commission and all of that, it meets all code and so on, which might save you guys some, some trouble. I mean, they're gonna, it's going to raise the tax base considerably for what you have right now. That space behind, again, it's just, the sewer runs through it, it's just, I don't know. I'd love to have an idea what, what to do with it. I know the property is on either side of that, not be happy about two-story townhomes built in their backyards. But it's not feasible, it just, it, it won't work for getting fire in there and all those sorts of things. It's a great corner, it's a great part of North St. Paul that is underutilized now. We could get it done. And we're not asking the city for any money, I guess, for lack of a better term. We would do it, finance it ourselves.
This project's still, it's still that sewer and water, and it's still a couple hundred thousand, two to three hundred thousand, just to, without a road to do it. So that's where we're kinda coming up with our price, you divide it out, you know, six lots. I mean, if you could get more, it'd be great, but if you study it just for a little bit, you can see how that's almost impossible.
And we did look at some of the earlier plans that had, and it didn't work, and of course, didn't meet the city's expectations.
And if you have Bergerman's plan, go ahead and take a look at them. On them plans, there are no dimensions. You scale that, there, at all. There's fifty pages, there's no dimensions. You scale it off from what I'm telling you from a tax statement, it don't work. Bergerman's plan don't work.
It don't fit.
Yeah.
Is his final plan with what, nine units?
Twelve, or he went down from twelve to nine?
Twelve to nine.
Who did?
Bergerman.
Yeah, yeah, I think he had quite a few, and then they knocked it down. But, you know, to pick up two more units with the road, that's the problem. It just doesn't pay to pick up two units.
And of course, these with Phase Seven, Seventeenth, we've already done some preliminary work with the county, it's a county road. They seem to have a problem with curb cuts or anything like that.
Yeah, the county already approved them for driveways, if we wanted them. We explained the situation to them, and they said, yeah, no problem.
These will be like your seventh, have a new house, your seventh?
Be more like the Sixth Street, single-family homes that you said there.
I mean, there'd be, you know, split entries. I mean, we, we can custom-build them to whatever, but more like a split entry to try and keep the price down. Again, but there's still, you know, you can't build anything for less than four hundred thousand, it seems nowadays.
Just to make sure I'm understanding it right, the panhandle, for lack of a better word, would be, would be landlocked, though, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, no, between the.
They have to be.
But no, no public access to it?
Unless the city, we gave the land to the city, we could, you know, do something between here. You know, a walk, I'd get there or something, but what would you?
No, I just wanted to make sure in my mind I was thinking of things correctly.
Yeah, it's, it's open for discussion. It could be part of the association, what they would do with it, I don't know. It, the most value would be to the adjoining properties, I would think.
I thought at one time you were discussing like a villa, like a one-level.
That was the other ones, right, right, the other ones. The prom, now you try it like this, you know, what we done them before, but, you know, they Face Seventeenth, two are facing here, they're not really in a cluster like a townhouse-type deal, you know, where they're all together, they're more like single-family homes. So they're a little tougher to sell as a townhouse when they're kinda designed like that, you know?
We have found with the townhouses, which are multi-level. I mean, it's, it's seniors that have sold their house in North St. Paul that are moving into those, which is very much possible with these, these units also. Any questions?
How many square feet with the houses? Were you looking at, square foot size for these homes?
Uh, they'd be around, uh, well, I brought a couple that, I showed you that we did on Sixth Street. They'd be similar to that. I don't know if this would, I can just hold it up here, I think. These are just two styles, this is a, you know, two different split entries that we did on Sixth Street.
Okay.
Two of them are down, the other ones, we had finished out, so I mean, it's just, you know, we could squeeze in, we could put in a three-car garage, which is kinda nice. You know, people like that get the four bedrooms, they would get it to a bath.
And in that case, on Sixth, which was a little bit of a, I don't know, it really upgraded that street when you go down there now. I mean, the houses were a little older stock, and, and it looks right there.
Yeah.
And these sold right away again.
Yeah, right away, right in a week, put them up to sell. I mean, it's, well, there's nothing new in North St. Paul.
Yeah, North St. Paul's a great, uh, great place, and people wanna be here.
I mean, we'd love to put in more if you could, but I just don't see, it just isn't feasible to do. That's the problem, you know? It seems like when you get, it's two and a half acres, you put that in your head, two and a half, that's a lot of property. But it's just, you know, if you had another fifty feet or so along this one, it would help like hell, you know? But it, you don't.
You're telling me, Tracy, there is room for mini golf, is what you're saying?
Absolutely, yeah. Putting green, whatever you wanna put back there.
So we challenge you. A park?
Here a park, yeah.
But that, you know, parks, may wanna get creative with it. We, you can see the portion we would need, the ponding would go on the east side, and the rest of it can be split off and can be retained by the city in North St. Paul if they'd like.
I'm turned around, east side being left or right on that?
Right. The handle.
The handle.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, anybody?
Just spitballing, if any of the houses on Seventeenth ever opened up, you'd have to divide the cost of the property into, would that help develop anything else back there in, I guess, what we've now called the panhandle?
Well, you can.
I mean, is there, you're, you're, it's landlocked on every side, isn't it? There's houses to the east, too.
The Seventeenth lots are very deep. I don't remember how much they are. The Backstreet lots aren't as deep, but.
There's one to the side.
And you've got a great square if you take out those four or five houses. But it, it, again, housing in North St. Paul seems to be very hot. Yes, there is, there is higher interest and so on, but it hasn't seemed to change the market that much from our perspective. But, yeah, you'd get a great square out of there, but.
Estimating what your?
Six residential lots, six residential houses would be, uh, cost-reliative now.
Sure. Any idea what your, around your final price for the homes would be?
They'd probably be around four fifty or so, you know, depending on.
Okay.
Like I said, it's tough to build anything for less than four now even, you know? So split entry being one of the less expensive to do, easier to finish the bottom bedrooms and the bathrooms.
Get more bang for your buck?
Yeah, for four bedrooms, two baths, maybe three baths, you know? Compared to like a Rambler or something where it gets pretty expensive, you know, to do that.
What we found is when these people sell their house, and they're custom-built, they, it escalates as they ask for four-season porches, other things.
Yeah, I mean, the ones up them townhomes, you know, we started at four hundred. The average on them are, I would say, between five and five fifty. They're finishing the basements, I mean, all out, it's kinda unbelievable, really. I didn't think that many people would finish their basements, you know? 'Cause just two people, a couple usually buying them, but they finish them, too, so.
So these are basically even more custom-built and stacked.
You're not just gonna, you're gonna have them sold before you break ground?
That's the plan.
Okay.
That'd be the plan, or else we'll just throw one out to start it, you know?
Okay.
As we did with the townhouses, Doug built the first twin, and then.
So you got something to see, you know?
Can I ask if there's any interest in exploring a little bit more density, like perhaps a PUD to make smaller lots?
Well, again, with those other plans.
I mean, these lots, you know, these are city lots already, which are small. I mean, they're sixty feet, sixty or sixty-five. It would, you have a five-foot setback on each side, so like the houses I showed you, they're just exactly right on. If we do go less, it's, it's not like you can do it enough to, to make it work, you know what I mean? You can't shrink enough.
Sorry, I don't.
Yeah. Even like these, you couldn't shrink enough to get another lot, even here on these four, 'cause you couldn't build the house. You gotta keep the house a certain size, or it's gonna be too small for the cost. See what I'm saying? It costs, you know, your heating costs are the same, your electrical costs are basically the same in a house. You all got a furnace, air conditioner. So you got a thousand-square-foot house, or you got a fifteen, it's basically the same. So you're, you're kinda, it's, they're tougher to sell. You get them too small, if the lot's too small, and we gotta build the house too small, it, it gets pretty tough to sell them.
I guess my concern there is if we're talking about our elders, and if it's too big, then that's a lot to clean or work and maintain. So if, if that is the population we're thinking about, that's where my concern would be.
This would be for anybody. This would be mostly first-time homebuyers, middle-home buyers, you know, anything, as a custom build. This, this isn't, you know, for seniors by no means, unless you're gonna build a Rambler or something like that, one story.
We've found that that's what retains these folks in North St. Paul, at least from the townhouse project, is that they, those townhouses are big. They were really downsized, yeah. But as far as the lot goes, yes, I mean, there you go, two stories, multiple three stories. I don't think the neighbors are gonna like it too. This really does fit in with the neighborhood, I believe.
Again, it's that panhandle there that just screws everything up, you know?
You should get royalties every time they say panhandle. New name for it.
I moved to adopt that motion.
All right, not like you're thinking. Our workshop, I got it. You almost, you must have bought that much. All right, any other questions, anybody?
I think I'm good, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate your time, guys. Good to see you. Thanks.
I'm for the police dogs.
You gonna house one?
I assume they'll be raising some money from that. But I think they do help a lot of cases.
Thank you. All right. Let me get back to, any other business? No other business? Okay, let's call to,
Oh, are we gonna have a little bit more discussion? To give direction?
Do we give direction here tonight? I wasn't sure.
That was the intent, if there was time. I wasn't sure how much.
About the numbers and everything else? Okay, I wasn't sure either. Twenty after, are we good to do a little bit?
Ten minutes?
Sure. If you want to start. I mean, otherwise, we, we go to another night? Do we have enough?
I mean, my, my question is, help me understand what the, what you're looking for, for an outcome. Are you, you're not looking for us to pick someone right now, or are you?
Well, ultimately, yes, that is the direction that staff is seeking. It doesn't have to be tonight necessarily. We could place it on a council agenda for the August meeting.
Didn't know if you would need any more time or any further questions that we could look into or not, but yeah, it's up to you for, if you want to go to the decision.
New for me, but I mean, the contrast and, and, and do we get into the details that, you know, he said there's too many as far as the land and even size? I mean, I, this is new to me as far as how we get down to that.
I think it's difficult to navigate the capacity that the land can hold without having the detailed engineering studies prepared. So I think at this point, we're just taking their expertise at land development into consideration and also what our zoning and comprehensive plans say. So it's currently zoned for single family, but our comp plan does recommend medium-density residential.
Yeah, I guess that's where like I lean more towards the High Point is because it, it aligns with our comp plan and we can have a little bit more density. I think that is important and that is our goal in a lot of ways. And so, yeah, I really see a value in that. And I like a park. They were very, you know, open to seeing that space in a different way, and I really appreciated that.
Anybody else?
I like the park idea, and I think we could get honestly both of them to go for it, though.
My own is kind of the, the neighborhood, you know, don't want it to be too massive in that little area as far as what they're used to is the, the height of the homes and things like that. So that concerns me a little bit when you have that many in that height. Cause I look at the M and I down there, maybe I'm saying that wrong. Is it M and I? You know, those things are just towers.
And just, I wasn't in this position last time Bruegmann had brought this forward. There was quite a bit of feedback from the public around that area of concerns about high density. That was brought up a few times. I didn't know the full background behind it, but I just know that was one of the issues.
I mean, are there steps and processes that we need to go through? Do we need to have a community, another community meeting to talk about the development, or do, or can we move forward without doing that? Do we need to tuck the nuts and the bolts of the dollars, the expectations of the developers as far as whether power lines need to be buried and who's gonna cover the costs? I, I got more questions than I have directions at this point in time, so.
I, I think it would be helpful to have, in the interim between now and the next meeting, to maybe send your questions to staff so that we can provide a thorough report for you to consider at the next meeting.
There's a discrepancy, quite a discrepancy between prices too.
Correct.
Yes.
And is, is High Point asking, cause they said they're not asking for anything, is High Point asking for any kind of help or anything like that?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we need to, a little time here and I like that idea, get the questions and be able to understand, like we can't get anything done in ten minutes, but at least we got a good presentations and we have, if we can get it on again, we go from there for August, if that works.
That does? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, call for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Member Cole, Councilmember Wong, all those in favor say aye.
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 I couldn't wait, it's last.
Stand for pledge me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and created in touching us all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here.
Can I give a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The consensus agenda tonight, item A, June 20th, 2023 workshop minutes. Item B, June 20th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims, $4,210,071. Item D, HRA claims of $22,125.73. Item E, special event permit for St. Peter's Fall Festival, September 24th, 2023. Item F, application for a temporary on-sale license and an application for charitable gambling for exempt permit for the Church of St. Peter, North St. Paul, September 23rd, 24th of 2023. Item G, cigarette and tobacco license renewal. Item H, building permit report for June of 2023. Item I is resolution accepting donations for June of 2023. And item J is Tyler Technologies Agreement for Credit Card Processing Services.
Thank you very much. Anybody looking to pull anything out of? If not, a motion to?
So moved, Your Honor.
Move. Councilmember Wong?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, next is open to the public. We have three minutes if we can. Lea, is it? Lee? Leanne, I'm sorry. I can't see the writing. How are you?
Hi, Lea.
Hi there.
I'm reading my father up with me.
Hi there.
All right, is the clock ticking?
Yes.
Okay, so as mentioned, my name is Leanne Weiner. This is my father, Mark Weiner. I live at 2475 Second Avenue East, North St. Paul, Minnesota. I'm just coming to share some concerns that have been kind of worried about recently since I've moved to my residence. And I've been living at this residence since October, sorry, August of 2020. So I have water encroaching on my property. On July 4th, we had a short duration of a storm. And there was a lot of sewer backup into my yard. I have a couple of pictures here that you can reference.
Thank you.
And just my overall concern is the damage to my property, me and my neighbor's property, and basement flooding. It probably rained for like 60 minutes, 45 minutes, and I just get worried as to what like a longer-term storm, three hours, four hours, could do in that time. Last year, we had a couple of storms that caused the same issue, and it's just a little scary, so.
Did you get water in your house during the storm?
I didn't. As you can see in the pictures, it didn't get to that level yet, but it was only raining for 60 minutes. So if it would have rained for longer, there is no doubt that I could have had an issue.
Would you be willing to send those digitally to Brian as well as take a picture of when it's dry and send it to Brian?
Absolutely.
Definitely.
You know, she, we just did a basic measurement from the curb, storm sewer to the hydrant, just for your references, about nine feet. So it's well beyond that. So I've lived in a home for years. I've been in many communities. It's a relative concern that we have, just because the encroachment of the water with a short-duration storm. If it was winter time, and we did check to see if the drain had egress, and it did. It just doesn't seem like it's capable of handling the water maybe from the slope of the whole entire street. Yeah, it does. There's a low area, and our subsequent neighbor will talk a little bit about that. But, you know, we don't, we're not suggesting remedies. We're just trying to make you aware of it. And it's a valid concern because if it does creep up into the property, it could cause significant damage in the lower level and decrease our property value.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Sean? Might as well keep it in a roll here.
Sean Rivett, 24, 83 Second Avenue East. Congratulations to the new council members. I haven't had to show up since the new people took over, so there's a lot of new faces. Congratulations, Mayor. Little background history on me. 12 years ago, almost to this day, it was actually like a week ago, I had over six feet of water in my basement. So I did have water, and I live right next door to Leanne. At that point in time, the lady had about three feet of water in her basement. But she never showed up because she couldn't get out of her house. So she never came to the city council meeting, and she never did nothing about it. I helped her get rid of it, cleaned up her place, we moved on. Well, then about a year later, I had three feet of water in my basement after I'd had my furnace replaced. So now I'm on my second furnace. Luckily, the guy was able to just replace the motherboard. Expensive, but whatever. So now, and also water heaters, but whatever. So that was in the last, whatever, how many years? Last year, I was in the same chambers, and the DNR had offered to help purchase my house and then put in a pond or some sort of something in there to help the street get to collect the water. Two of the council members said yes, two of the council members said no, and the mayor said no. Didn't find it to be a problem. Now, I sent you guys a video. I hope you were all able to watch it. So now if you guys can tell me honestly that that's not a problem, I'll turn around, leave this place, and I won't come back here ever again. I swore last year I'd never step foot in this place again. But I'm done dealing with this, man. I had to buy cameras so I can watch my house when it rains when I'm at work because I can't afford to leave work and stuff. And I mean, you can only imagine what I go through. And this doesn't, this is winter and summer. Winter time, it gets knee-deep out in front of my house. They've had to come, the cities had to come and plow the water to the drain to get it to drain. Because the old council member showed up at my house, he's like, "Super easy. Just unclog your drain." There's no drain in front of my house or down there. So if the water doesn't drain, we have big bad issues. And I still do not see why my house was not purchased last year to help our neighborhood. So I am looking for a remedy. I've been dealing with this for 12 years. Every year, there's not one year you can't not find my face standing in front of this podium, asking for help. Asking for the street to be fixed, asking for something to be done. And it got to the point where maybe we can purchase your house. Maybe we can help alleviate that. They were supposed to purchase the property behind my house at one point in time, but no. They let the whatever Reflex Medical Building purchase the property and put two more houses back there, which doesn't help the water issue. Now the water doesn't have anywhere to go. They built them a fancy little pond. The last mayor said he did not want to set precedent by buying houses. They bought the one on the corner to build their precious little pond in the corner. That's precedence. Building, purchased a house to help the other people out because it was Reflex Medical.
Okay.
So.
Well, it's, it's a lot of history. We'll get together with the manager, city manager, Brian, and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Is somebody going to get back to me? How long do I have to wait till I hear from somebody before? I don't know, before I cannot be stressed out anymore, you know?
No guarantee to take your stress away, but I'll get back to you by the end of this week, at least touch base.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you, councilmembers. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Did you go to White Bear? Okay. John? Mr. Small. How are you? Time of meetings.
A friend. He's got a friend for the first time.
First time?
John Small, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. This is getting to be too much. Anyway, three items. First one, it's a round of applause, whoops, to someone who now thought it was a good idea to put the time of the meeting on the first sheet that announces the meeting. This is two months it took of saying, "Put the time of the meeting." Because we had a meeting just now before this that didn't meet the requirements of 5:30 for the workshop. And there was nothing on there that said it was a special meeting to move it to five instead of like it used to be, you know? You just love confusion. That's all I can figure out. You love confusion. Second item, July 4th. I spoke to councilmember Wong about July 4th. And if you don't know what I'm bringing up, then you haven't got a clue what goes on at Casey Lake Park on July 4th. This was, I can't say it was the worst time. I've lived there 48 years, 48 years, and nothing has changed. It's fireworks. And this time, I'd say it was the second worst. It was the second worst because it wouldn't stop. It went on and on and on till 10:30. The last go-around for a report on the crime, when there's calls coming in, was 11:30 about fireworks, 11:30. Cool, huh? To be subjected to that. At least the city of Minneapolis had brains enough to shut down the Stone Arch Bridge because they had problems before, and they just said, "We're not allowing anyone there." It should be the same thing for Casey Park. 8 o'clock on July 4th, everybody out. It's over. No police, no police whatsoever, no presence of our police department. And that's what we have to put up with. Third item that I have is that there was a meeting on the East Metro Groundwater. The one that I saw that was there at this meeting, put on by the DNR. Very interesting, very interesting. Brought up about it isn't someone's water other than if you can steal from the groundwater. You know, you don't have a fence around it saying, "This is our water." You know, I got a well, but there's a fence around it. This is with Blaine, where they put in three new wells. And they said, "Well, we had a fourth well that we asked for permission to start, and we thought the other three wells were covered by that." Cool. They weren't. And they had like 27 wells that went dry from individuals. It's just, you know, you got to be concerned about groundwater.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we don't, we got 10,000 lakes, but groundwater is finite.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
All righty. All right, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Next items?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Next up is the City Business Action Items and Recommendations. Randy, would you turn that over to you, or are you going to have Jim discuss that?
No, I can go through them. There's the next four council items, A, B, C, and D, are all related to the Lilly project development. The first is related to the TIBR grant agreement. If you'll recall, back in October of last year, the city council approved a resolution authorizing the city to apply for funding on the developer's behalf. That is the tax-based revitalization account to assist with site cleanup activities related to the Lilly redevelopment. TIBR is available by the Livable Cities Act, and it's administered by the Met Council. The city has been provided with the grant agreement from the Met Council. Our attorneys have reviewed it. And they have prepared a subgrant agreement as well as the developer is the intended recipient, and will carry out the cleanup activities. So the city will enter into the subgrant agreement with the developer, and then we would transfer the grant amount to the developer to ensure that the city's obligations are fulfilled. So the subgrant agreement protects the city. Again, the city attorney reviewed the draft grant agreement and prepared the subgrant agreement between the city and the developer. So at this point, we're asking for authorization from council to execute both of those agreements. Any questions about those?
Any question?
I guess that was items A, and I'll let you go ahead and do your business, then I'll continue on.
Items A?
That was A and B.
If there's, Mr. Mayor, if there's an agreement to adopt these, I do believe that you can with a single motion adopt both the grant agreement and the subgrant agreement.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt those two?
So moved, Your Honor.
So move. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The third item is a security agreement for the Lilly redevelopment. And I would ask that Michaela present if you have the.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The action item before you tonight, again, as related to the Lilly building redevelopment, is a security agreement that was requested by the developer in conjunction with the tax increment assistance that was already approved by the city council pursuant to the terms of the TIF assistance agreement. The developers lender Sunrise Banks is requesting the security agreement. And essentially what it is, is it's pledging the the tax increment from the city to, directly to Sunrise to repay the obligation that the lender, or excuse me, that the developer needs for financing. So as a contingent or as requirement of Sunrise, they've requested that the city consider this security agreement, which again, the conditions of it are that the developer's rights would be assigned under the TIF assistance agreement that was already approved to the bank as a collateral for the loan. This can be pretty consistent practice regarding the developer obtaining the financing and essentially pledging the increment that will be pledged from the city to the bank to repay the obligation. We have reviewed the security agreement, and we recommend, we being, me from Baker Tilly, as well as the city's TIF attorney from Taft Law Firm, that you consider, that you could consider approving the security agreement contingent on the developer providing evidence that the assignment within the security agreement, there's a difference in the entity of who would be signing the security agreement with the TIF agreement. So we would recommend that should you consider approval of the security agreement, that there's additional that would be contingent on receiving information satisfactory to the city council, the city manager, and the finance director, that they're providing evidence that the signatory is authorized to sign on behalf of the debtor. So essentially, it's making sure the security agreements between 2515 Seventh Avenue LLC, the TIF assistance agreements between 2215 NSP LLC. So essentially, understanding that the TIF assistance as pledged to the developer, the development entity in the TIF assistance agreement is the same as the entity signing the TIF or the security agreement, if that makes sense. So it's more of a, it's a lot of legalese language that essentially the developer needs this to be able to obtain the financing. And it's Sunrise Bank requesting that essentially the that the TIF note is collateral to obtain the financing that they need for the project.
And you mentioned that's pretty standard practice.
Yep, it's fairly standard. This is, I would say this one along, and maybe if Jim wants to speak to the complexity of obtaining financing for this project, I know there's been, we've been before you a couple of times with different requirements of Sunrise Bank. I think given the complexity with obtaining the financing and the interest rate environment and so on. But this is a fairly standard practice of collateralizing the TIF note to be able to obtain the financing.
Thank you.
So best practice type of thing?
It's somewhat common on a case-by-case basis of what the lender requires. So it really comes down to what Sunrise Bank is requiring of the developer. And in this case, this is what they are requiring and requesting from the developer obtained from the city in order to be able to secure the TIF note and pledge that as collateral to the financing.
Any other questions? We vote on this one too, right, individually?
I make guess, Mike, go ahead.
Just going to say it does take a motion.
Yep. So anybody want to bring a motion?
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Cole? Second?
Second.
Councilmember Wong? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Line up, Jim.
Wouldn't be a council meeting without you, Jim.
I really just, I can't say enough kind words about all of you and your staff. And this deal would not be happening if it wasn't for what you folks have helped us with, and we're really excited. We're scheduled to close either Tuesday, Wednesday next week, and then we get the guys with the big fun demo trucks and everything coming in the following, so hopefully it all falls in place.
Okay.
And then we'll get something sent on the books to do a ribbon, probably second or third week of August. We'll check with them, and we'll do something fun, too.
Right.
Okay?
Look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it, Jim. All righty.
Okay, the next item is item D, also related to the Lilly building redevelopment project. The TIBR grant requires that the city have adopted a fair housing policy. And I have scoured our books, and I wasn't able to find that we have ever done that. The Civil Rights Act of 1968 with the Fair Housing Amendments of 1988 is intended to assure equal housing opportunities for all persons. And the Metropolitan Council requires that grant recipients that have adopted a fair they require that housing projects with a housing component have a fair housing policy. So I have asked our city attorney to prepare, to prepare a policy that would be in alignment with the Fair Housing Act. And that is what is in your packet. And I guess I would defer any questions to the city attorney on that.
I don't have any update on it unless there are questions. It is the two grant agreements that have been approved. This is a part of administering that, so it's, I don't know about a formality, but it is something that's required.
Correct.
We won on it, then. Please, some, some call motion?
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Wong? Second?
Second.
Councilmember Norby? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is also the parking lot paving at 2579 Seventh Avenue East. And I'll turn that over to Randy Howe, our Community Development Director.
This is an item that has been considered by the EDA, I think, since probably the spring of 2022. At that point in time, it was determined that the piece of property at 2579 Seventh Avenue is in a condition that is not conducive to attracting new development downtown. And so there's a lack of green space as well that's been a concern of the EDA and the Parks and Rec Commission. And so at the point in time last spring, they engaged with the city engineer to prepare some concept plans that would green up the space in addition to add some parking. And so we had the concepts drawn up, the EDA reviewed those, and they selected one. And we then went forward and obtained some bids for that. Then subsequent discussions with the EDA resulted in requesting what would it cost to just pave the entire lot. And at the last EDA meeting here in July, the direction was given to seek funding from the city council wherein the EDA would fund 50% of the cost to pave the entire lot for parking. And they would throw in an additional 500, or sorry, $5,000 for pavers and other street amenities such as benches or possibly picnic tables. The project cost came in about $52,000, and so the city, or the EDA is requesting a contribution from city council from the 2023 budget in the amount of sorry, I don't have that pulled up in front of me here. The city's contribution would be $26,272.50 for the overall project. So at this point, staff is seeking a budget amendment to allow that project to go forward.
One additional note on that is that was one abstained on that vote, otherwise it was unanimous for the full parking lot of that lot.
Sorry, one more time?
It wasn't unanimous because I voted against it.
You abstained.
No, I didn't. Shifkey did. Shifkey did because she had a bid.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you didn't earn that the last meeting, but so tell me that again. You?
Shifkey sustained from the vote.
Abstained.
Abstained, thank you, or sustained, or whatever it is. Due to conflict. And I voted, I was opposed to the project of a parking lot.
Excuse me, yes.
You kept out because you didn't have enough. Was that something else?
It was something else. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Yes.
Randy's right. This has gone on for at least 18 months. The spaces that exist today, I don't even think is in align with our own personal ordinances. So we're kind of a bad tenant of some space downtown. When we first started looking at this, the costs were a lot lower than what they came in with. Then COVID came around, drove a lot of the pricing up, and now we've seen a lot of favorable pricing come back in our way. I believe some of the original quotes that we got back were in the $150,000 range. I was opposed to it at the EDA meeting for a couple of different, for a couple of different reasons. One, the city has, really truly has a lack of soft space. And so to take a lot and pave it over completely for blacktop doesn't meet, in my opinion, what the city can use. We had soft space where the old City Hall and Max, the old Max Diner used to sit. It was very well utilized. Park and Rec utilized it for movie on Main. We had vendors that would park out there during car, or be out there during car show. There were a lot of different uses for it. And so for that reason, the way that, the way that it's written, I will vote against it again tonight.
Anybody else? What was the price for the hole when we were talking about?
It was 79.
But that, we still don't have the answer where we can get water to Main to try to do this. Did you get the answer?
79.
Was the water?
The 79 was all blacktops, and then it would have been a 50/50 split, was mine standing?
52 was.
It was 52.
Or 52, excuse me. God, I only had that right.
The green space plus the half parking lot was 70, 79.
Okay.
And then 52 was all blacktop.
All blacktop.
There we go.
And there was, the big expenses were to catch the water from, and somebody mentioned maybe trying to grab it from the neighbor. We didn't know if that was something because you had to go to the main, and there was a lot of construction that would have done that. I don't know. Found anything?
So where the clinic stood, there is not a standpipe for the water there, so they don't know where that's at. So if they had to go find the main, dig to it, that would be a considerable expense. One idea that was brought up was to contact either business on either side to see if they would allow a hose for summertime watering, and then maybe work out some kind of deal with them clearly on their water bill.
And the 52,000, if I remember right, that had, they're going to maybe some some benches and some pots or something to bring some kind of green space. Was there some?
There was no green space. They talked about forklifting in a couple of planters.
Or some greenery, I should say. Sorry, greenery.
Correct. That would be looked into if we did, went that route.
I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to view the two sketches that were in. WSB did the first one. I don't know who did the all-paved parking lot, but I hope if everybody didn't see them in the packet, I ask that they be put up for consideration. If everybody's seen it, then that's fine.
Would you like to see it again?
I'd like to see it again.
I think Dan might be telling you later this evening, but this project is included in the in the current 2024 CIP plan. So if you vote yes tonight, this will be removed from next year's budget proposal. But here's the preferred design for that space.
What money did he have in it for last year, or for next year, excuse me?
I used the money that was based on the bids, yeah.
I guess like one of my biggest concerns is, and this is because we just recently gone through the master redevelopment plan, is there really isn't a whole lot of other space that we have as a city to make green space. And that is a huge, that's a concern of mine. And, um, yeah, there's just not a whole lot of places to sit and, and enjoy or what have you. So I think, um, that could help liven it up if it was dedicated green space entirely.
I agree. That, that area is a lot of concrete as it is right now, asphalt, whatever you want to look at it. And that green space would bring beautification inside a area that is full of concrete. Not to mention additional opportunities for events inside the car show, space with that, and just downtown walking. Love Ice Cream is right to the, uh, right of that, a few spaces down. It, it's, it's nicer to see people if they were inside Sidewinders instead of in front of the building, off to the side in that green space. I just think it's going to bring, if there was green space, it would beautify downtown.
Could I get some clarification? Just, I got confused by some of the numbers that were coming out. So going to green space with irrigation is the cheapest option, right?
No.
More expensive.
About twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand more.
So what was the thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three bid?
The green space and irrigation would be in addition to the half parking lot bid. So the forty-five thousand plus the thirty-three thousand, um, is where you get about seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
I also see Parks and Rec utilizing that location as well for past events that they had downtown. But I also see future opportunities for events as well on a Parks and Rec side.
Also for the arts and culture side, too.
So even though twenty-seven thousand seems high, there's a lot of opportunity for growth with both commissions and the beautification of the city.
Does that twenty-seven include getting the main wherever we're at?
The, the twenty-seven was fifty percent of the
I get that, but we
The full parking lot.
We don't know how much it's going to cost to get water to irrigate, is what I was asking.
Correct, we don't
We do not, that's an unknown number. So that's what we have to put in there.
Has the EDA kind of con, um, considered alternative, like, um, grasses or like green space? I mean, urban green space doesn't necessarily always just grass. So are there turf or other considerations?
It hasn't been discussed yet, but it's something that could be explored.
It's, it's just something I've seen a lot pop up lately is the turf.
Myself.
And it's easy to clean and manage. But yeah, just something to consider.
I would, I voted for the, for the full parking lot because of, I think, the expense of some of the other stuff like that. But if we could do something where it's not irrigation and putting a lot of effort into getting the water and stuff like that.
Has there been a, a discussion with Public Works and Ron?
Yes, they've been involved in all of these discussions to give it, help procure the quotes and, um...
Okay.
They just don't know where they can get the water from yet.
Mm-hmm, correct.
I don't know what kind of turf, like a football field turf? Is that what you're kind of thinking? Councilmember Wong?
Whatever turf people use, yeah, at the, the bars or the breweries, I think it's the same.
How do you keep it clean if you have animals in that area?
Um, you hose it down.
I mean, it's, it's worth a discussion. I mean, it's
That would have to be a water truck from the city to do that because we don't have the water over there.
Can I ask how many parking lots there, or parking spots there are? And what the difference is between a half and full? And how the decision was to do angled versus straight?
It looks like there's about seventeen with this half lot. And I think there is fifty, approximately fifty in the full lot. The angled versus, um, straight, I think it was just based on the, the most efficient use of the space with keeping into the, um, keeping the dimensions that are required.
The, the angle, I believe, allowed two additional parking spots from straight end parking. And it also then just kind of created a traffic flow in and out off of Sepulon.
In one way and out the other?
Correct.
Does anyone recall how many parking spots we added last, last year in, behind K&amp;J?
No.
Oh, gosh.
Cause, yeah, cause I guess, you know, it's, for me, it's a, a balance. We have just put in a lot of parking. And how do we prioritize green space if, if parking continues to be the priority? And this is one of our few least, or the, you know, one of the only parcels that we have in this area.
We do have three city, at least three city parking facilities in addition to this lot that are within a block.
Well, the one across the street really isn't, it has a sign up, but it's not
Just the one right behind it.
Over on Margaret I was talking about, straight across from here.
Yep, and then right behind Margaret is the one I was talking about, Ansepolis.
And there's a Sandberg lot behind there that was just repaved and then the K&amp;J lot, yeah.
I would, I don't know how much it costs, but I would, you know, as far as the space where there's less maintenance and as far as having irrigation and, because it's going to be pretty trampled. That's the thing, too, is when you got the, you know, hopefully it will be. That means people are using it, but, I mean, grass is pretty hard, especially when you have a lot of different activities on it. If it could be other, some kind of surface, but I don't have an idea how much that runs.
We can certainly get some quotes together, though.
Especially with the unknown. I mean, how do we find out exact price for, to get water and things and another infrastructure?
One of his ideas sounded pretty expensive. They were talking about even picking up where the, uh, sprinkler was left off on Margaret and Seventh here and then boring down, um, to that site, which can be expensive, um, to get the water there if they
Especially if we did it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it wasn't a permanent park, so they didn't think of any water down that far.
Right.
What's any, but what's your thoughts, um, Councilmember Norby? Been thinking pretty hard over there, I figured I better ask you.
I think at a minimum, we table this, um, and I'm not sure if that's the correct word, and ask the city to come up with some other options and give us quotes at the next, um, council meeting. Um, I don't, I don't see this as a pressing item that we need to decide today. I see a lot of views, um...
The word expensive keeps getting tossed around, and I think that's, um, not a right statement to use if you don't know how much it's going to cost without more information backing it up, like grass seed. It's expensive. Well, what type of grass are you, you laying and planting down? How much does it cost, um, Ron, to plant that? The words expensive are, that's an easy word to use unless we have numbers.
I think part of it is just the water source. I don't think we're ever going to get an answer to that one.
Well, and that's something we need to look at. So where are we going to tap in? We're going to borrow it from somebody? We're just going to make that assumption? Are we, should we ask first? Because if they're not willing to let us tap from there, then that tells us the story right there. We're not going to be able to plant green space if we don't have any water that we can tap into. And if it's the next door neighbor, wherever they're looking, then we need, we need to ask at least. The answer's no if you don't ask.
We're gonna, but also do we want to look at some kind of a turf where we have less maintenance to go across?
Yeah, the artificial
Be able to enjoy it. To me, that makes more sense than grass. Just because it is, it, you know, it's not a permanent park. We, you know, someday it may be so, we don't know, but at least have something where it would take some wear and tear because, you know, there could be quite a bit. And then we're also talking, you know, we don't have any place to put snow in the winter either, as far as that. We're temporary place to put snow until we get it hauled out. Because the good news is we're developing a lot. The bad news is we don't have many spots to, to put snow. We got to get them out of here. And we have to, you know, get the downtown plowed and then get it out of there, so... But I, I would like to look into the turf and the water. That was the question that came up, that we, uh, weren't sure if we could talk to the neighbor on either side and then they'd have to separate a meter out? Wouldn't they have to do that, Brian?
I think what they would do is see how long the, um, sprinklers would run and find out the gallons used, and they would figure that out to give the credit to that.
I also think it would be worth checking into on how often you would have to replace that turf and what type of turf you use. Because there's turf that you can put, it's like pieces of pebble or whatever it is. I mean, just, you're going to have to keep it fluffed and groomed and how's that going to happen? Who's going to take care of that?
Yep, we'll look into that as well.
The Conway Center, the community center there, their soccer fields are all turf. And, um, they seem, the operations supervisor seemed to really like that material because it was also recycled. So I don't know how that, um, plays into an option. But, um, the other thing is when we think about water is, um, what the feasibility is around maybe rain catchment or, um, you know, something along those lines.
Definitely for the parking lot. Yeah.
And, and maybe even the roofs off the sides of those buildings, too.
Right. Looks like we're looking for more information. Do we have a list of everything that, uh?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to make a motion to table it? I mean, Brian, do you think you can have this by the next meeting or is there?
Mm-hmm.
So if there's a, a motion to table it to your, what was your next meeting?
August?
Late August.
Late August?
Could, could I ask for a clarification? The, the agenda item was to approve a budget amendment. So it sounds to me like
It won't.
You're looking at not doing that and you're seeking instead to pursue the green space?
Sounds like as far as the majority of the council, it sounds like green space is for the majority.
So do we need a vote to, to give direction? And maybe this is a Dan question. Do we, do we need to have a vote to give the financial direction? And then kick the can back down for, I, I don't know.
Candidly, what, what I think is always helpful is if you guys want to take this up at, I believe, your August fifteenth meeting, if there's a motion to table it and directing staff to do blank, um, so that the direction is clear, what it is you want to have come back to you so that you can make a decision. So if it's more information on turf, then that could be the direction. If it's financial information, then that's the direction. But I, I would be clear in your motion to table it to explain why you're not able to make that motion tonight or decision tonight and explain what additional information you want.
So it sounds like we have two, the, the artificial, something artificial and water source that we can talk to the neighbors because it sounds like the other one is not feasible that far down.
And the maintenance of the turf as well.
So may I recommend to table it?
Mm-hmm.
We look into the pricing of artificial turf and the, uh, maintenance of it. We look into the water source and who we are borrowing water and what that's going to cost the city. If we're going to plant grass, I mean, you, it's concrete now or it's asphalt, right? So you're going to have to tear that up. What, what does that look like? How much is that going to cost?
It's all included in the
It, that's all included, okay.
Yeah, to get it down was the
And that, yeah, I mean, it's irrigation, where are we borrowing the water from? And
Sounds to me like that seventy-nine bid is close if we can borrow water from the neighbor. Because the only unknown with the seventy-nine bid is where we're getting the water from. So that's the only spot we're missing.
Okay. And then the upkeep of that, I know you had concern about the snow removal.
We just got to push snow.
If we put snow removal there, what is it going to look like to upkeep that in the spring, once that's been hit? I mean, that's all salted snow, so there's going to be more grassy put down. I mean, it's just bigger picture items to think about. So I ask that we table it and look in those items.
Finance Director.
Thank you. If I, if I, if I may add something from the discussion here. Basically, I would table it and direct staff to develop three options. One is the existing option that is presented in front of you tonight. The second would be for artificial turf and the other one would be for real grass. It would be look, you would look at it from what is the one-time capital cost to be able to, um, implement any one of those three and then the ongoing costs. And also addition to that is some pros and cons because, um, uh, the mayor has brought up a point, um, and I know, um, our Public Works Director Ron has brought it up, too, as far as plowing, um, and not having that parking space for plowing into the future. So there would be some pros and cons underneath both, all three of the options. And then part of, from finance perspective, we will develop a financing plan just like we did with this last one, um, and have that included in the, in the three options.
Now, this is just considered temporary, so we don't have to worry about any of the things that come with the park, right? As far as if somebody says any kind of an ADA or anything like that, where, because it's not really a true park. I know that question's come up quite a bit.
What, what's your concern?
Or any kind of ADA, like a, you know, any kind of, you know, any kind of ADA?
ADA.
I'm sorry, ADA I meant to say, yeah.
No, we, we, no. I mean, you're, you're always going to have to do things via the ADA, but, um, you're talking about laying down some grass seed or things like that. So we, we're fine on this. Yep. So if there's basically a motion to adopt Dan's, um, suggestion on the three recommendations and table it till August fourteenth or fifteenth, um, that would be in order at this point.
Okay. So I have a motion?
So move, Your Honor.
So move, Councilmember Swier?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Wong, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, twenty twenty-four budget discussion. Dan and Mary Kay are going to be presenting on that.
Well, Mayor, council members, here we are again. It's a month later. There's been a lot of work, um, that's been done on the, on the budget to date. And there's a lot of information in the packet tonight. I'm not going to go through all of the information, um, that's here today, um, as far as some of the attachments. I'll tell you what they are for your references because some of the next steps, um, that we'll be having will be, um, meeting with, uh, the department heads and we'll go through all of that detail at that point in time. But for tonight, uh, the purpose is, um, first kind of wanted to start off just so, since we have three new council members, um, on the city councils, to talk about what budgets, um, does the city council have to approve? And then from our last workshop, we'll kind of give some of the summary of the activities of this, some of the brainstorming and some of the ideas that were thrown out in our twenty twenty-four levy target. We'll review the driving factors in our twenty twenty-four budget. We'll look at where we're standing right now after we've met with all of our department heads for the preliminary levy. And then we'll look at, uh, some, we'll look at the general fund budgets just at a very high level. And then we'll, uh, review some additional options that are not included in the budget that have come out from our discussions with the department heads. And then we'll, uh, take a look at, uh, the capital improvement plan. And then we'll talk about how we're going to do the next steps, again, remembering that by, um, September, we have to approve the maximum levy. That includes, uh, the city budget, which includes two components, the operation, the debt. And then we have to approve HRA and EDA levies. Those will be the maximum, um, and then they have to be certified by the end of September to Ramsey County. And so we'll talk about some of those next steps. At a very high level, the budgets, um, that are approved by city council are the general fund that we just kind of talked, talked about, um, the HRA, the Economic Development Authority. And then there's proprietary funds. And the proprietary funds are our enterprise funds, which are utilities, and then our internal service funds. And those funds are set up like for technology, insurance, um, and so forth. And then there's some other funds that are set up like, um, uh, community center, community event fund, fire relief, and street maintenance are underneath the permanent funds. And I'm not going to go through all of the different components or pieces and definitions of the enterprise funds. You know, we have six of them, water fund, wastewater fund, electric fund, surface water fund, solid waste fund, and fiber optic fund. Internal service funds, we have information technology, we have the insurance, equipment, city mechanic, and the building maintenance internal service fund. So the costs are collected here and the charges are allocated off to the departments in both the enterprise funds and in the general fund. Other budgets, like I had mentioned, are the community center, community event, fire relief, park, and street maintenance fund. So one of our workshop items last time we met, we were to talk about what the city council priorities were. And it kind of broke it into four different kind of sections, infrastructure, staffing, public safety, and other. And you can see the most responses were given on the infrastructure. And I totally agree with the needs that we have for the infrastructure. And that's where I think it's really important. What the city has started a few years back is really developing a very comprehensive capital improvement plan. Tonight, Mary Kay is going to show you what we've done with our capital improvement plan. We've picked it up a little bit on some steroids and we're making it more professional and to give you more information on the projects that are, that are in there. A lot of thanks go, will go to Mary Kay for all of her hard work that she's done on that and actually introducing the software that we're using for that and then all of our department heads. They had to do a lot of work in a very short time period to gather some sort of estimates and then putting in some descriptions. Other is making sure that we have adequate staffing and that we should probably look at total compensation plan for employees. You probably want to time that out when union negotiations are occurring. Public safety, making sure that some of the comments were keeping perception of safety up, school safety. And some of the other items out there was internet, keeping costs low, not kicking the can down the road, limiting liability and business layout. From our brainstorming session, we talked about maximizing our resources and minimizing the overall, the overall impact to the residents of the city. We had in there, we need to look at the IT contract and options, insurance options, the fire department costs and options, police department costs and options, use of consultants versus in-house, all major contracts, grant opportunities, useful life of equipment, sales tax, cannabis, and bidding process. There's an asterisk next to a number of items here. There is a handout that was attached that'll give you further information on those items that we certainly can discuss either tonight or at some other point in time. And then the third item that was asked was, you know, trying to get council members kind of a sense or feel where a levy target would be. We had four council members respond. The average of those four responses is between 4.5 to 7% is looking at a levy increase. If you remember, our median household value has increased about 9%. Right now, it's a little bit early in finding out what the majority of cities are going at. But feelers out there with about a half a dozen to nine cities is that they're kind of targeting somewhere in the range of about 6% to 7% is kind of the majority kind of sense and feel of where most cities are at of what, and again, that's a preliminary number. So definitely a lot of discussion, you know, from their organizations. Again, the driving factors that were presented, you know, we have total personnel costs, you know, we have an increase in our debt levy. We are going to get some additional local government aid. Our information technology costs have increased. And then CIP, the infrastructure, the items that were shown above, you know, would, you know, amount to about a 5.6% increase. After we've met with the department heads and the city manager put his comments in and made adjustments, we have a preliminary budget right now at 5.5%. And so you can see the city is at 5.5. That's including the general fund and debt. And proposing that we, if you remember, last year, we eliminated the levy for the HRA. I'm suggesting that we start to increase it slightly over time. And so putting 11,000 into that and then the EDA staying where it was in 2023, overall, that would give a levy increase from 2023 of 5.5%. That's where we stand today. The budgets, there's the, what the revenues and the expenditures of the general fund budget are for right now with the preliminary for 2024. As you can see, the revenues have gone up. So have the expenditures, obviously. To have a balanced budget, that means we have to levy more dollars, which is shown in the revenues underneath the ad valorem taxes. That's where that 5.5% levy resides. You can see some intergovernmental increase. That's the increase in local government aid and then estimates for permitting and so forth. You can see down below, our expenditures are shown on this table by category of personnel, supplies, contractual services, capital, debt, and transfers. And so you can see the makeup of each ever, of each and every one of those categories. And then also the next one shows the same revenues, but it shows the expenditures broken down by departments. And that's kind of where we're at with the general fund. And one of the attachments that you have with this packet are all of the general fund budgets and you have them all the way down to the line item detail. And that will be something that will be presented by the department heads and for you to ask questions of the department heads on each and every one of those line items, if you so choose to. Additional options, options that came out of our department head meeting, after we reviewed, we had two separate meetings with all of the department heads, one to look at capital improvement plan together to make sure everybody was in agreement with what was being presented. We also did the same thing with the budgets. And there were some additional items that are not in the budget but are up for consideration. And there'll be much more dialogue on that, on these items when department heads present their budgets to you. But the list is, I've got the first one of a 1% levy dedicated to CIP. What we will be showing after we go through our discussions with the department heads is a method in which we can try to generate additional funds through the levy to help pay for our infrastructural needs that the city has. And so that'll be coming later. The next item is to combine two part-time code compliance positions into one full-time position in the fire and fire and inspection department. And then there's another item there that is requesting an increase on the on-call firefighters of $3 per hour. And then there's another item that's requesting one K9 and the expenses that are associated with that. Each one of these will show you the dollar amount and also what the potential increase in the levy would be. So if you were to accept all of these, you'd move from a 5.5 to a 7.66% levy increase. Now we come to the very exciting part here. And I'm very excited. And I know two council members that have been here during my tenure so far, that when I started, there really was not a comprehensive capital improvement plan. And so in two, for the first two years, developed something and headed in an Excel spreadsheet, we've kicked it up. And so I am going to turn the mic over to Mary Kay because she deserves the credit for all of the hard work. And I would like her to kind of walk you through the changes that we've made and hopefully you're as excited as I am.
Okay. First, I don't deserve all the credit. All the departments helped a lot with this, as Dan mentioned. And Dan obviously helped lead the project too. So, so in your attachments, you should have got the new CIP book as a PDF. And so just to give an overview of how it's organized, there we go. Okay. So with the new system, we're hoping that can provide better reporting. So you can have different ways to analyze it. But then we also have more detail that helps get better descriptions and justifications. And so in the CIP book.
By the way, I have a new computer today. Having a little bit of difficulty. Couldn't have waited till Wednesday.
Okay. So there's a table content. So if you're looking for specific departments, it'll give you an easier way to find the departments. And as you can see, there's also a couple of summary reports at the beginning of the book. So if we go to page one to begin with, this just gives a brief overview of some of the information we're collecting on the projects. So every project has a project number. The first part kind of identifies a category, whether it's building, equipment, park, pavement. And then there's a project name, a project description, a justification for the project, the department, the department had that requested the project. Each project was assigned a type, whether it was maintenance, new, a plan or study, or replacement. Each department had provided useful lives for their projects. And then also, we asked the department heads to assign a priority with one being critical, two being very important, three being important, four less important, and five a future consideration. And so if we go to page two, this report here is basically just a summary report. And this report is organized by the type of project. And so you can see the first page has the buildings and the capital technology. And then if we scroll to the next page, those are all of the parks, pavement. And then if we scroll down to page seven, you will see that there's a total for the capital projects. So if we look at the 2024, you can see the total requests are just under 5.3 million. And then if you look at the next year, you can see it goes up to over 10 million. So hopefully, this just provides a high-level report of the requests that will be out there. So if we go to the next page, these are the exact same projects, just a different way to look at it. Instead of by the type of projects, these are by department. And so first page, community development, electric. And if we scroll to the bottom, you're going to see the exact same totals as the other report. And so then if we scroll down to page 14, here is where we start breaking things down by the department. So you can see page 14 is community development. And if we look at the second line on that page, you can see it's the downtown parking and green space project that was talked about earlier. And so you can see currently it's in the book at 120,000 for next year. And if we scroll down just two pages, you can see the detail that Brandy had filled out. So you can see the description, the justification. And in the header, you can see the department, the contact person, the useful life. And so that's kind of how the book is set up. So hopefully it provides that high-level overview, but then it also can help provide more detail if you have questions about specific requests.
Thank you so much. Very much, yeah. It's very helpful.
Great job. Thank you.
Thanks. I think the justifications help. I like the ranking piece of it or the prioritization piece too. So thank you.
Good. And I would just say that it is a draft, like on the, where we see like the funding requests, we're still working through them with cash rules to try to figure out what could be afforded by the different funds and different options.
No, wasn't that worth it? That was good. And the two, and the two, and the two council members that were here to see this as we've gone through, I think we made, yeah, leaps and, leaps and bounds. Well, yeah, yeah, see? There we go.
Wow. Wow.
Little bit.
You do you. You do you, Tim.
Well, I, I thank you very much because for a finance director, this is as good as it gets. And then additional attachments that are there again are the general fund budgets to where we're at today, enterprise and internal service funds. And so really, it's just because of the schedule and so forth and to be able to approve, you know, the maximum levy for the general fund, HRA and EDA by September. And we missed the first August meeting and so forth, that we really do need to look for some special sessions so we can get the meetings with our department heads. And it's really up to the city council hall, we want to do that. If we want to try to do all of the department heads in one day, I think that's probably a little bit too much. I think we need to do it in split in two meetings that we could go through. And if we get through that, then we would have one more meeting that we could have on a regularly scheduled in early September. We're basically, we will come back with, with what the decisions from the meetings were and then have that maximum levy. And again, a maximum levy means that you can bring it down, you can still have discussions after September, you just can't go up above that component to it. So, yeah, so really it's going to be looking at trying to develop some special sessions still here in August. And then, you know, well, when the department heads present here in August, we will, in addition, we will have the write-ups of the narratives of the departments with some statistical information that will be presented in addition to their budget summaries and their budget line items for you to review. And you'll have that ahead of time before the department head meetings. So it's really looking at what are, you know, some dates that could possibly, and we don't need to discuss it today, or how is that, I'm going to turn that over. Jenny, how do we, do we have to decide today or we can, you're pulling?
If I have to talk to all council members and have a, an idea, please.
Thank you.
Dan, you seem to be giving us a lot of wonderful information to go over. Dan, you seem to be giving us a lot of wonderful information to go over to set this maximum. What is, is there a benefit to being close on this maximum? Or to not just say, there's no way we're not going over 12%? Set it at 12% and just?
Well, I think I would try to set something that you believe is reasonable. There's a cause and effect with everything. Whatever we certify as our maximum levy will be included in the truth and taxation notices that'll go out in November. That means it goes to every resident who owns property. And that's where they will see this huge increase that you're proposing, even though you're really never going to do that. And you'll have, at least, I always look at it, you should have a lot of people making comments and coming in here and being upset if you truly aren't intending to do that. So to me, you want to be somewhere in the ballpark of a percent or two, no more than that, from where you believe that you're going to end up being. And a lot of that will, you know, I think in the past years depends on, you know, we also, we want to see where our neighboring cities are going and what the trends are. And it just, I think, an optics perspective, you don't want to be the one at 25% where everybody else is at 5%, so.
But there's no penalties associated with, there's no legal ramifications, it's all optics and?
Correct.
Being fair to our residents.
Yeah, you could set that maximum levy at 20% and then come in at a 5% for the final approval, if you would like to do that. Again, I would, my advice would be, I would be against it, just from that optics standpoint. And why put alarm into our residents if that's not something that the city is intending to truly do? Because there may be some day that you really do have to raise a significant increase in your levy. And you want our residents to know that we're serious when we look at this. Any other questions? Any other comments? And there's a lot of information there. And I just want to take a moment. First of all, I want to thank City Council for all your support that you've given to the Finance Department. We had an item tonight that was the approval of the Tyler Technology, which is going to be able to get us to that 2.25% charging on our utilities. In addition to that, they have some additional features, which they're actually going to help us do to make it easier for residents to pay. They either, they even have, you know, ways that they can do a text-to-pay and some other options. So very excited for that and your support and your direction that you've given to the Finance Department. Want to give all the department headers kudos for all the help that they've done on their capital improvement plans and their budgets to date. And then the biggest kudos that I have to give, because I've already given Mary Kay hers, is to our city manager. Our city manager has taken a huge vital role in our development of our budget in meeting with all of our department heads. And without his support, we wouldn't be where we are right now in the process. So I thank you very much, city manager, and I thank you all, council members. If there's no other questions, I'm going to be done. Isn't that a record? Come on.
I didn't run the timer.
He looked right at you.
Oh, I felt it.
I felt it.
You know, I'm just joking.
I do.
No, you're not. It's okay to say no.
Thank you for your work and love the CIP.
I look forward to seeing the name of the technology next day.
Yes. Let's just, baby steps, come on. But yes, no, I'm excited and they're willing to help us. And it was fun to negotiate it. From the workshop that we had on the credit cards, we had a certain percentage. And then they turned around and increased those percentages. So we ended up getting it back to where we were, and we got them to hold it for three years. So, yeah, so it was quite fun and exciting. And yes, Mary Kay's been a fantastic addition to the City of North St. Paul and the Finance Department, so. And then I just, I love coming up here, I really do.
Well, thank you so much for everything. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Just kudos to Dan, to you and the whole department. You've, I mean, since Lisa and I started sitting up here, we were wide-eyed and didn't understand a dang thing you said for about a year. But this has brought it, okay, you're a rapid adapter. But what's been presented is a lot easier to swallow, a lot easier to understand, and a lot of work and effort went into it. So I just want to thank you and your team.
So you're saying we only got five months left to play the new card? Is that what you're saying? All right.
You get a year.
That's what I said, only have five months left. I better sharpen up.
You're ahead of the curve.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next, any reports?
Thank you, Mayor. So reports from city manager and departments. I will start off with Dan Finance, that they've done an incredible amount of work putting all this together and at the same time, training in a new employee. Couldn't be happier with what Dan has done. And I'm excited for you guys to hear the story of his negotiations with Tyler Technology. He did a wonderful job. So, yeah, more than busy with the budget process. Public Works has been clearly busy as well with their, they got the mill and overlay done at the Burke Belmont Elder Gareo. Been getting a lot of thank yous for that, and everything looks pretty good down there, really good down there. Moving on, next to Shaun's Way and Diane Street. And what's left from there with this year's budgeted funds, they will look at how much they can do on 16th East of McKnight Road. So they should be able to get for sure from McKnight, hopefully, to Third, and potentially even to Second, depending on what is, what funding is left over. They have, they're going to be doing this in three different stages, but they've been putting a sprinkler system out at Casey Lake by the playground area, so that would be nice to green that up. The student-built house is moving along really well. They, I believe they just poured the driveway over there. Just a few things, little things left. They'll be painting, carpeting, and then landscaping. And then they'll be moving on to pouring the basement of the next house over. It's also moving along nicely, yeah. The downtown project, street project is going well, even though we could use the rain. It's been very beneficial for them to get a lot of work done during that time. They did have to haul quite a bit of soil and fill out of there that they found to be contaminated. I haven't heard the extra cost for that, being that it had to be sent to a separate landfill for that. But, so more to come with that. But projects move along well. They dug that out, replaced it back up, got it compacted. Sounds like next Monday, they'll be doing, pouring curb, so it's moving along well. The PD has been doing their program for gun trigger locks. They had two of them, 200 of them to give away. They've been giving away here at City Hall. The foundation was given away at the car show as well, so kind of a nice program. Fire Department will be doing some fire extinguisher training for people up here at City Hall coming up soon. Brent will put that on. They're also doing that program of going in and replacing smoke detectors, which is always a well-liked program by our residents. Electric Department's been, finished up their project of the relighting of the path down on 19th Trail along the lake. That looks really good. Straightened out them lights. Some of them lights were randomly in odd places, so it all came together well. They did some overhead underground rewire behind Sherrell's there over in Oakdale. Of course, a lot of focus has been on the Sepulveda Boulevard for the Lily Project. Still waiting on long lead times on some of the equipment, but were able to accommodate to make sure the program moves forward. They, some of the concern that they have right now is the 8,000 volts power line that runs along Sepulveda to at least get them moved out over the road, Sepulveda, or temporarily put something underground if they can, because they'll have to come in. One of the first things they'll have to do is put pilings along Sepulveda so they don't dig out a big basement, and then Sepulveda shears off into the basement area, or that dugout area. But it's coming along well. City Hall has their yearly training coming up, kind of covers like MSDS, ergonomics, bloodborne pathogens aware program. We do that once a year. That's coming up soon. Thank you, Jenny. What else we got? We got the employee city picnic coming up here soon, Wednesday, August 9th. We'll be shutting down City Hall from 11:30 to 1:30, so employees can go over there. You guys are certainly invited. Hope to see you there. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Reports for council, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Norby.
The Planning Commission had their meeting on Thursday, November, or Thursday, July 6th. I was unable to attend as I was out of town. I've watched the YouTube and it sounds like they got a lot of nice work done, and there's some information on the web. And their next one is August 3rd.
Thank you much.
Yeah, the Arts and Culture Commission has been quite busy. They're about to launch a Phase Two of the utility ramps. So I think both of them have now been installed, and they're also discussing their budget. And the muralist, mural project is going forward. One thing for us to consider is that we had a conversation around for a council is when would council like to have a project or some sort of, you know, come forward to council before, you know, it continues to be developed? Yeah, so just something for us to think about and maybe talk at a workshop or later. But I think that would be helpful in terms of expectations and, you know, is our, do we want to provide input on certain things? So just having some parameters around that. Their next meeting is on, I believe, August 2nd at 6:30 here in the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you much. Councilmember here.
Parks and Rec Commission is busy continuously planning their upcoming events. They have food truck night, excuse me, on Wednesday, July 26th, 5 to 8 p.m. at Housie Park. The same day, their meeting will be in council chambers at 6:30. And don't forget about the event this upcoming Thursday at Casey Lake, Music in the Park at 7 p.m. by the Bazillions.
All right. Thank you much. Councilmember Cole.
We had our EDA meeting on the 11th. There were three primary topics, budget conversation for 2024 and what the EDA levy would look like. We also spent a lot of time talking about the proposed vacant space that we just discussed tonight, as far as what, you know, what recommendations the EDA wanted to make to bring forward to council. And the third topic had to do with the vacant lot across the street from City Hall. They have entertained a proposal to take a look at, and they want to share that with council in upcoming meetings or workshops. Other than that, I think, John, did I cover most? Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor Monkey, did I cover most items?
Yep.
Next EDA meeting is 8:08 in council chambers at 3 o'clock.
Thank you very much. General business. Councilmember Norby.
None at this time.
Councilmember Cole? I did it again. I was so good. It was right at.
There's the check mark.
There is that paper.
It was right at the end. Couldn't wait just two seconds to, you're writing it down? Yep.
We have a tally, yes.
Oh, good.
I, I don't have any new business, but to also go back to the Arts and Culture Commission, one discussion we also had was around the culture component of arts and culture and the concept of diversity, equity, inclusion, and really branching out and looking at how that can be implemented more in the programming space. But then, you know, how can it be, you know, something that resonates throughout the rest of the organization? So it reflects our community.
All right.
I don't really have anything. We did the fire appreciation dinner last Wednesday. It was lovely to spend some time with all the firefighters and their families, again, appreciating the fact that these individuals are volunteers, they take time away from their families to serve our city and serve the surrounding cities as well. So it was a very lovely event that Jason put together for everybody.
Thank you very much. Member Cole, number two.
You can call me Wong. Seems like it's been forever since we've had a council meeting, so we have had a few activities in the community. Had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting, both at Sweetie's Candy Store as well as Hangtime Board. That was right prior to the Fourth of July. That was a lot of fun. There's a lot of energy in both the new business owners in North St. Paul and a lot of great ideas to come. So I had the opportunity to attend that. You didn't stab anybody, Mayor, with the big giant scissors, so that's a plus.
Yeah, they got a workout in a row.
I want to give a shout out to Ron, Randy, and team at City Works, or Public Works, I'm sorry. I met them the 5th of July after, at Casey Park after the Fourth of July. And their group spent the majority of the day cleaning up a lot of our parks here in town. It wasn't, Casey wasn't as bad as prior years, but there, and the park was actually cleaner than prior years. But it's, you scratch your head as to, I mean, people were leaving their coolers with food in them and their grills and just all sorts of stuff that Public Works went out to clean up. They had rereak a few ball fields, so hats off and kudos to Public Works for taking care of that. Councilmember Schwerer referenced, I called it the family fighter family picnic.
Nice.
But we had the opportunity, and I'm sure Carrie has some pictures of the mayor in an apron, so that's a wonderful cherished thing to hang. And then had the opportunity to visit Carpenter Small Engine Repair, re-grandopening, it's under new ownership. Local North St. Paul individual purchased it, so had the opportunity to attend that as well. So it's been a busy month.
Yes. A lot of us were at those. Thank you very much. It was great to see the new businesses and Carpenter's, they doing a good job with that. Only thing I can bring in is when we were at our picnic, there was a lot of little kids. Our town has a lot of little kids coming. It was really fun to see all the, they come in twos, they have twins, we come in, all different. So it was very nice to see their families and how, what a great group they are. So I really enjoyed that. And one other note I learned is when we were on that street, 17th is one of the main streets for the firefighters for Maplewood as well, so.
There is.
They would, if everybody thinks that North St. Paul's burning down a lot, it's not that. It's just they take that to McKnight and down McKnight, probably because White Bear Avenue's too crowded. So just a little, if people are wondering why they're hearing more sirens, it's their north fire department, and they whip down 17th to McKnight. So just a little, we learned that and we were there. All right.
Can I add one thing?
You sure can.
I got an email. As you all know, I'm part of the pilot program for the food recycling, and it's going to be opening up to all you, so keep an eye on your emails, and very soon, you will be able to put the green bag in your garbage as well.
I saw that note come out as well, and I was excited to see it. And I did want to have a conversation with you just to talk about how easy it was to implement and do.
Absolutely. Happy to have that.
Good deal. Oh, we're looking to do a recess? Is that what you're going to call for?
My understanding is what the council would like to do is, instead of going to the closed session for the performance review of city manager Brian Frandl right now, we'd like to go ahead and take care of the HRA meeting and then come back to the review, which I think makes good sense. So if there is a motion to recess this meeting, to re, a motion to recess this meeting, to come back into session immediately following the HRA meeting, that would be appropriate at this point in time.
So you want to throw that motion out?
Some of y'all.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwerer.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And then it's. And then it's.
You ready? All right. Call the HRA meeting, please take a roll, do you take a roll or for this one as well?
Okay, Commissioner Cole.
Here.
Commissioner Schwer.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Nordby.
Here.
Chair Monge.
Here.
All right.
Action items tonight are for the HRA is, we have the 2024 Budget Discussion, and we'll turn that over to Brandy Howar, Community Development Director.
Hi, everybody, thanks for accommodating the, the move of the HRA meeting. The one item that we have for discussion tonight, I know this is probably only the second meeting for more than half of you of the HRA, so I did provide in the staff report a little bit of background on the function, functions of an HRA, the powers and duties that it is given by statute, as well as the programs that the North St. Paul HRA has supported over the years. And just to give, give you an update on those, or an overview, rather, our HRA was established in June of 1971, and since that time, we have supported three primary programs. The first is the GHMC Home Program, which provided loans from two to five, sorry, $2 to $50,000 to assist homeowners maintain and improve their properties. The program was administered by the Greater Metro Housing Corporation, and that program is no longer offered by the HRA. They also funded emergency repair loans between $1,000 and $8,000. And that program assisted low-income homeowners to make a correction to their household if it was in danger of being uninhabitable. The loan recipients were required to meet HUD, HUD's 80% AMI threshold, and additionally, that, that program is no longer offered by the HRA either. The Student-Built Housing Program is the third, and that, as you know, is a partnership between the city and the Northeast Metro Career and Tech Center, where students build and remodel homes on city-owned property. That partnership helps improve the housing stock, adds to our tax base, and gives students an opportunity to explore careers in the building and construction trades. So what we've been doing for the past few years, the activities that the HRA has funded has been primarily the Student-Built Housing Program, as well as monitoring any of those remaining home improvement and emergency loans. Acquisition for real estate has also been an expense that has been programmed, as well as funding for personnel and overhead expenses to administer the HRA fund. In 2023, there was no levy increase, and in decision-making last year, the HRA planned to utilize the existing fund balance over other, other revenue to support those activities. And so in the discussion of the 2024 budget, staff put together a proposed budget that's in the packet. You'll see that the revenues listed in there are from the anticipated sale of our, our current student-built house on Eldridge Avenue, as well as investment, investment income. The expenditures that we have listed include personnel costs, supplies and services that are commensurate with previous budget years. We put down $280,000 for potential property acquisition that would continue to support, support the Student-Built Housing Program. And then finally, there's $20,000 in transfers that was included to the general fund, and that has been proposed in previous budget years, and it was done by the direction of the former City Council. So if there are any questions, I could take those, or if there's any discussion or changes, we're happy to accommodate that.
Any question? All right.
No, not in regards to the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything, the only thing that, I don't know, that I've talked to Brian about is now that for our HRA, the last one of our three we had, we have left, excuse me, the Student-Built Housing, is I'd like just to reach out, because now they're working on their foundation of their, their last lot, and I know that Tom is getting older, and we're not sure, so we want to make sure to reach out to say how important this is to our city and how we enjoy this partnership, and want to continue forward, because we're gonna, if that's the last leg we have right now of what we're doing with the HRA, I think we need to really get on it and make sure that, and if there is some changes, we need to have time to figure out what we're gonna do.
An update on that, I did reach out to Eric to have a meeting with him that hasn't been set up yet. Unfortunate for us, unfortunate for Tom, it sounds like there was some, some retirement issues that he might be sticking around a little bit longer, which has benefited us, I mean, he's just spectacular, he's great to work with, very knowledgeable, keeps things moving smoothly, very good with letting us know of what's going on, what's coming up, so, good for us, though, but as much as he deserves that, so that's the latest, I know.
So thus would be trying to get another project for the year after next, then?
And I've been, had discussions with Brandy, we've been looking at a couple of different lots with some ideas which we'll bring back to you.
Great, good, I'm glad we're going forward, thank you for checking that out.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would like to entertain the idea of inviting the, someone from planning and one from EDA to housing, just because I feel like they have their own insights from their perspectives that would really contribute to how we, how we move this forward. So, just something for us to really consider, I just think it'll give us a wider perspective. Brandy, can you speak to the discontinuation of some of those loan programs?
I, I tried to look into the history of meeting minutes or council packets to figure out what, what was the cause of that, and I was not able to find the history, so it's possible that a decision was made, I'm not sure, it's possible that maybe the program is just not administered by, by that entity anymore. I think there's a similar program that the EDA had with small, small business facade improvements that we no longer do anymore either, and so I'm in the process of trying to investigate what additional programs, at least for the EDA, are possible. And if there is a desire to direct staff to, to look into those types of programs for the HRA as well, I could do that.
I mean, I would like to see that, I think it is in our comp plan as well, so I guess it's a little, yeah, yeah, something for us to really take a look at. Especially since housing's, I mean, our community is majority housing, so.
What I remember from conversation of prior council, prior to us, they were discontinued because of, of lack of interest. No one was applying for anything. And there was, prior council just made a decision that if nobody's interested, let's remove those from, from the table. I would love to entertain looking back at them.
Yeah, I think there are several communities near us that, that offer, I think Neighbor, Neighbor Works, or something like that, they offer that type of program. Yeah, I'd love to know what's out there.
All right, anything else?
I have a question, and tell me if, I, I'm new, so please help me out. Would it be appropriate if we are looking for another student-built housing project? If Luther is gonna put those in the city lots where we ask them to develop four and we keep one for a student-built lot? Is, is that?
I know at one time they were talking about using those for student, but that was too big of a chunk for, for Tom at the time, when he was still, we were looked at, many years out, but that just scared him a little.
Yeah, that was the issue, they could only do, well, one a year, and because there were so many different units that it was passed by, yeah, it would take him a long time. And with the transition, we didn't know what was going to go on with Tom and the program itself.
Do we have some other spots you're thinking of?
Yeah, one is, we're looking into making sure that the space works over there on Sixth and South.
Seventh Avenue.
Or Seventh Avenue, excuse me, right next to Webster School, right across the street there on the corner. It, it's an odd-shaped lot, it's kind of a little bit of a pie shape, and I know that, I think they looked into the county before and they didn't want to allow a drive off of South Avenue, but, so we'd have to look at, and because of the tightness that coming off of Sixth, I just need to redig into it again, it's been a while since we looked at that lot, but we'll see if that can work as one of the options.
I would just kind of like to see the project stay a whole project for the developer, because then it becomes later on, somebody else is trying to, and the student housing may be too slow. That'd be my only thought on that. Hopefully can find some more spots.
Hmm, yep.
Anything else, or look to a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Move, Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, how do we get back in hours now?
Mayor, if there's a, a motion to reconvene the regular City Council meeting?
Have a motion to reconvene?
So moved, Your Honor.
Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Schwer, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Welcome back.
And now that you're back into regular session, Mr. Mayor, I believe the only item left is to go into closed session, so I, what I would ask is that on your agenda, there is language that should be read out loud into the record, and then a motion to go into closed session.
Where is it?
It's this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, would you read it off, what you got up there? Must have closed when I opened up the HRA, sorry.
This meeting will be closed pursuant to the Minnesota Statute 13D dot 05 sub D 3A to conduct a performance review of the City Manager Brian Frandl.
If there's a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer, second.
Second.
Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right.